Welcome. I'd like to call the order, our August 9th meeting of the City Council Redevelopment Agency. Let's start off with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, item two, changes to the order, the agenda, Mr. Weiss, anything?
We have no changes.
Okay. I may make one recommendation. We have, under new business, 9D, which deals with the sewer budget increases. I would expect that to be a fairly short agenda item, and it follows 9C, which I think we'll be spending quite a bit of time on this evening. So in the spirit of letting Robert Weil maybe heading home an hour early, can we, I'd recommend moving that up to the first item on new business. Would that be okay?
That's fine.
Great, okay. Any other changes? Good. A report from closed sessions. Mr. Rubens.
No reportable action from closed session, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Item number seven, our council communications and announcements. Mr. Klein.
I have nothing.
Quiet summer, quiet, okay.
Cold, too.
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, I'll come up with something then. It's dear to my heart. Our summer concert series are over. I'm saddened, but we had a great concert series, of course, in Burden Park. We had five events this last summer. A special recognition to Tom Davids and San Carlos together. We're very much involved in a volunteer effort on making a lot of that happen, along with our Parks and Rec Department, not only from setup and choosing bands, but even garbage pickup after the concerts. I know Rotary Club helped after one of the concerts for, it's a great first experience with using a much more vibrant and active volunteer group, so that worked out really well. We'll just have to wait till next summer to do it all over again. This was the 20th year of our summer concert series, so, great, great, great show. And with that, moving on to public comment, I have one speaker card, but there may be more. If anybody would like to speak on any item, any topic that's not on this evening's agenda, they're welcome to do so now. Dave Krabi, I have a speaker card. Dave, come on up. Hi, welcome, Dave. And again, you've got limited time to about two minutes would be great on public comment. Thank you.
This will be real short. I'm David Krab. I live in Crestview Drive in San Carlos. This is about Vista Park. I know you're in the transition period between park maintenance people. Vista Park is not in good shape maintenance-wise. The trash cans were overflowing, the pathways are getting overgrown with weeds, and we have a particular nasty weed out there, which is an invasive species called a California star thistle that's taking over the land. And we should like to see if we could get the city to come out and do something about that. We called, I and a couple of my neighbors have tried to, have called the Parks people and have not gotten a response. I assume it's probably because of all this transition that's going on, but I appreciate if one of you could kind of, you know, light a fire into somebody. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak on any item, not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Okay, approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar are items that are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless someone from City Council, staff, or public requests special items be removed for separate action. With that, I hear a motion for consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Okay, motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay.
I think it's one of the shortest consent calendars ever.
Yeah.
Summertime, very short.
Okay, item seven, we are moving this evening, reports to council. We have two reports to council this evening, one from our fire chief on the fire department and the second on the east side community transit connectivity projects. So we'll start with Chief Frye. Welcome. This is 7A, we are covering.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as I do quarterly, I submit a quarterly report to you on the events and activities that have occurred within the fire department, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding that list at this time.
Okay, any questions?
I have no questions.
Good report.
Good information.
Mr. Gasselli, any questions?
No, I read over the report. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And by the way, let me just announce, Mr. Grocott had some personal business this evening. He may be showing up, or he may not, depending on how long it takes him, but he has an excused absence this evening, though he may be coming. 7B, Mr. Weil, this is Metropolitan Transportation Commission Transportation for Livability Communities Program Grant, East Side Community Transit Connectivity Project. And I believe there's lots of money that was involved, and we're going to be doing quite a bit. So with that, Mr. Weil.
Mayor and council members, Robert Weil, Public Works Director. Yes, the city is very fortunate to have received $2.2 million in grant funds through a very competitive grant program from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And I think the credit goes to people with vision, the community development department and the council, and really a lot of legwork that went into leading up to this. And then we used Calendar and Associates to put together the grant application, and I asked them to just run through the project for the council's information. We're not asking for any action tonight, but just wanted to tell you about the project. There will be a lot of community input as we go forward, and we know there are some trade-offs to be worked through, parking in particular. But once we get a consultant on board, we'll have, I should say, we'll have to do a consultant, separate consultant selection process, because we'll be using federal dollars for the consultant selection. So it'll be a separate consultant selection process. Once we get that consultant on board, one of the first tasks will be to go out and vet the project through the community and work through all the trade-offs involved. With that all, introduce Peter Calendar.
Great, thank you, Robert. I'm Peter Calendar of Calendar Associates. I had the pleasure of working with your staff to put together the grant application. The Metropolitan Transportation Commission has had a livable communities program for several years now, and it's a very competitive program. What's, what the city essentially has been able to do is cobble together a number of smaller projects that you've talked about and thought about and planned and had community workshops on before, put them together in a more comprehensive long-term vision. What you're looking at here is what the, if you're standing up on top of the depot looking down toward East San Carlos Avenue, this is what we're going to be looking at in a couple of years. The walkable, livable communities program does focus on transit-oriented development. They're trying to improve the walkability and the bikeability in people's neighborhoods, and it's exactly the kind of project that we presented to them that fulfilled all the requirements. Our particular project is about a mile and a half long. It's a T-shaped configuration. The East San Carlos Avenue, which is the spine there, is an important component of it. And Old County Road will start at Taylor and work our way down to Britton with a variety of improvements that the neighborhood is certainly looking forward to. We're talking about continuous sidewalks, where in some cases we don't have them, pedestrian bulbouts, and we can talk more about those if you want to know what they are, curb ramps, actually widening sidewalks to seven feet, which doesn't sound like a phenomenal astronomical achievement, but it does make the neighborhood incredibly more walkable. Decade of crosswalks, street trees, opportunity for stormwater treatment, streetlights, as well as a portion of it where we're actually undergrounding some of the overhead utilities and using another one of the programs that the city currently has, but we'll be able to roll it into this one and get more out of it. We're creating a bicycle boulevard on East San Carlos Avenue, as well as increasing the bicycle signage and the traffic signal. This is very much a project where the whole is greater than the sum of all those parts we just talked about. Giving you a little bit better idea of some of the pieces, this is the section of Old County Road at Sylvan. We'll be able to deal with creating a pedestrian scale sidewalk scene, the street trees that you see there, and streetlights will be contiguous. In the upper right-hand corner, you'll see typical bulbout intersection paintings, as well as some stormwater treatment that we'll be able to use. Further on down Old County Road at Commercial, we're not expending quite as much effort because the opportunities aren't there, but we are enhancing the existing underpass, for instance, which gets a tremendous amount of pedestrian traffic. We're adding the safety improvements at that configuration, as well as five-foot wide bike lanes. The Old County Road at the train depot will receive a number of different improvements, including decorative crosswalks at that particular location, creating a bike boulevard down San Carlos Avenue. Again, street trees, bulbouts, streetlights. You see a little bit of a plan view, what the concept will be like down in industrial road at East San Carlos Avenue. We'll be retaining some on street parking here, and again, using those same elements. What we've been able to do is take your existing cross-section, which you see in this particular section, and rework striping, lane widths, parking, to create wider sidewalks on the left, a parking lane, and a shared lane, which MTC is very excited about in terms of making room for bicyclists. You only have to be there a short time and appreciate the amount of multimodal activity that we really get along that particular corridor. Another typical existing cross-section, we have very narrow sidewalks, and we're ending up able to do wider sidewalks, streetlights, parking, stormwater treatment area way over on the right. So you work through there. Here's East San Carlos Avenue, Bayport, entirely different configuration, a very different flavor to a street. We're actually taking that and turning it into what they call a bike boulevard, which is a concept that's working quite well in other borough communities. We actually have a shared travel lane with bikes as well as cars, some stormwater treatment on the left. We'll have some parking tree wells, which will help us maximize the on-street parking that currently exists there. Again, looking down, if you're standing on top of the depot, looking down, we'll have in-street LED lights for pedestrians, enhanced decorative crosswalks, streetlights, street trees. These are some of the photographic images that give you an idea of what's transpiring there. But we do have our work cut out for us. This is about a two-year project. It is federally funded. It has to go through, we're not only taking the bull by the horns and undergrounding utilities and forming a separate utility district, which you're already aware of, we have to go through a rather elaborate and thorough Caltrans process. We've got to go through a consultant selection process. I think perhaps the most important one that most folks in the east side community are going to be very interested in is the step four, the preliminary design community output, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute. And of course, construction documents being completed with bids opening in June of 2011, and construction being finished for fall of 2012. Back to step four, the preliminary design community input process. We do have some parking loss on Old County Road and East San Carlos Avenue that we need to go through with the community. We need to talk about trade-offs and figure out exactly where we're losing stalls, where we're gaining lane width, where we're gaining walkways and bikeways. So we will be working with the neighborhood businesses, as well as the Transportation and Circulation Commission. You will be getting the plan back in its final form. So you will be seeing this one more time before we ride off in the horizon with the bulldozers. The, this particular project, I think, was extremely fascinating because it took a tremendous amount of effort from almost every one of your city departments, manager's office, public works, redevelopment planning. All the planning that you were able to do over the past five, eight years was incorporated into this application, and rose your application to the top of the pile. You ended up with one of the larger grants from MTC, in a large part because of that kind of approach, also because of your success in previous grant applications with the same agency. We got some great support letters from the Greater East Side San Carlos Neighborhood Association, the Palo Alto Medical Foundation, San Carlos, the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, CCAG, the Chamber, a whole bunch of people, Senator Joe Semidion's office. Those kind of letters were extremely important for making this application come to light. So that's the rough background on it. We're off and running. Robert's got about 107 other line items, other than the ones you saw up there, to meet in terms of milestones. Be more than happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
Okay, questions first? I do have a, we'll have some public comment, of course, right after, and then we'll have some discussion. But any questions?
I have no questions.
Mr. Gasselli?
Yeah.
No, okay.
Oh, actually, I do. I do have some questions.
Yes, please.
I'm sorry. Mr. Weil?
This is terrific. I'm really excited that we're going to get to start to do this. In the first page of the, of your report, you talk about a couple of different pools of money. So I wanted to go through those just a little bit. We are getting a grant, and that's about 2.2 million. Then there is a 20% match that is coming from a Prop 1B allocation and some other funds. Can you talk about that, and also, this is not coming from the general fund of San Carlos, which pays for police and fire and all those other things. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. The grant required a 20% match, and we added up the cost of what you saw on the screen there, and it came up to 2.7 million, more or less. And so we had to come up with the difference between 2.7 and 2.2. And it's just so happened that, at the same time, the state made available to us our allocation from Proposition 1B, which was a bond measure passed by the voters, oh, I can't remember exactly when, but each local agency got a share of that bond money to be used for transportation projects of its choosing. So it's kind of neat, because we're using state money to match the federal money. I like that. I mean, it's not, we don't have a lot of money in the game. There was a little bit left over, which was, we needed to come up with, which was RDA money, redevelopment agency money, and I can't remember that number. It was around 100 and some thousand. So no general fund money on the capital side. Now, the other question is, what about on the operating side? Because that's also significant. And that works out pretty well, too, because the, that we're going to be using, we have streetlights on the street now, and we're paying for those streetlights. And we'll be putting more streetlights in, but they'll be more efficient. So actually, the net operating cost from the additional streetlights is only about $300 a year, so it's not very much. The sidewalks are the property owner's responsibility to maintain, so that's no net additional cost, and same with the street trees. So really, everything you see up on the screen there doesn't have a big operating fund impact.
Terrific. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I'd like to get some public comment here. I have a couple speaker cards. First, Sam Hersberg, please, can you come up? And actually, as Sam's walking up, I will actually have to mention that his two daughters, Alicia and Talia, participated in this project by doing our, kind of our audit walk, that we called it. So I'm hoping your public comments will include thoughts of your children, because they do have better thoughts than we do sometimes, so.
Absolutely.
But please, we're interested in what you have to say here. Sam?
I've been a resident of East San Carlos for, in San Carlos, for 14 years, coming up this October. And one of the things I've always wanted to make sure is that people can get where they want to go as easily as possible. When the berm was created for Caltrans, it put the power lines on the sidewalks, and over time, more and more street signs were showing up, and it started to become kind of a concern that, can people get around? And, you know, we've had other issues that have come up with the transit village and high-speed rail, and one of our arguments has always been, hey, we're a transit village, too, and we just want to be able to get to the transit station and to the park and to the kids to be able to walk to school and to the downtown area. And I just want to thank you very personally, and thank you on behalf of our neighborhood. We really appreciate this. This is a big, a big step for us, helping our neighborhood. And I really appreciate that it's being done completely independent of high-speed rail or the transit village. You're doing this for the residents of San Carlos, and it's going to be a gigantic improvement in our lives, and we really appreciate it. And also, I'd like to just commend your staff, Alice Ave and Robert Weil and Deborah Nelson. It's been a pleasure working with them, and thank you, thank you very much for this project, and congratulations.
And again, thanks to your entire family for participating here. It's great. Ben Fuller, I believe, Ben, is 7B you want to speak about, I'm assuming? Great, thank you. Come on. Welcome, Ben.
To you guys, it's hard to follow up a speech like that, but I'll do my best. First of all, yeah, let's take our hats off to the staff and the council. This is the biggest win in the history of our neighborhood, I believe, in Greater East San Carlos. We've had a lot of things happen over the years, but this one really, we believe, it preserves the sacrosanct territorial integrity of our neighborhood for many years to come. It's the investment in creating that corridor on Old County Road and sort of preserving that is so important to us. And so, and we also want to commend the council and the staff, I'll point them out, Robert, Al, and Deborah, for the order in which you're approaching this. We think that it's great that you're taking care of this first, high-speed rail second, and then what's going to happen in that parcel, whether it be transit village or something else, third. So thanks from the bottom of our hearts. We're very appreciative. There's going to be no jabs taken here tonight. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Anybody else like to speak on item 7B? Okay, so back to council here. This is kind of a study report. Any, any comments or recommendations? Back to staff before this comes back. Mr. Gasselli?
No, it's going to come back to us. So I mean, the timeline was given. There's a bunch of things that staff has to do before we see it again. So again, everybody's excited about it, and again, can't say thank you enough.
Okay.
I would just add, Mr. Weil has done, and Al and Deborah have done terrific work with public outreach in the past. I know that this is going to be a great project. I'm excited. So, and I also do want to commend just the really creative use of finding money where we can. That's what we're looking for. Thank you.
So I have a few thoughts I'd like to pass on as you, before you bring this project back, back up to us. You mentioned, of course, one of the big changes will be the parking and reductions of parking. The big gain will be the pedestrian and bicycle access. I want to make sure that, you know, one, that when looking at the teams and the letters and so forth, that we make a real valid effort of contacting the businesses along Old County Road. We need to look at residents, we need to look at businesses and the impact. I'm sure there are businesses that don't care about parking. I think there may be a few that will die if we impact their parking, so we need to make sure that we include them with the study. Also, with parking, there are little items that could be fine-tuned. We need to think about how we handle them. Right now, there are about 20 parking spaces on the east side of the depot where people park. They avoid paying the $2 fee or whatever it is. And when we eliminate that parking, where will they park? They could park in the neighborhoods. We need to be careful with that. We're eliminating a lot of the southbound, right-hand parking. So if you're driving northbound, you could park in front of the business. If you're driving southbound, what I see in most of the area, people will not be able to pull in front of the business. They'll have to go the intersection, more U-turns, or people pulling into the neighborhood, in and out of a driveway. So we need to make sure we maintain, right now, it's a pretty safe street, but still, if there's more access, more U-turns, more people flipping around the businesses, traffic becomes a safety item we need to pay attention to. And, let's see here. And my last item is, and I talked to Robert a little bit about this. I would like just to look at it to assure, there is a separate project going on that we've been talking about, which is our Holly 101 exchange. And the bicycle route for that, to get people all the way across to Redwood Shores, was to route them down East San Carlos Avenue. So the design now includes basically a Class 3, and let me explain what that is. There's Class 2, which half of this area will include, will be a bike lane, basically. It's a white stripe with a bike lane. Class 3 bicycle is basically the shallows where it's shared. In other words, there's cars and bicycles share the same lane. Well, East San Carlos, in this plan, shows a narrowing, one lane each way on East San Carlos, so you have the advantage of slowing traffic down, because you're squeezing it in. But you're also, we're going to be promoting with a separate project, the 101 Holly, trying to promote more bicycle traffic down that street. So I just want to make sure we pay attention to what Holly is doing and how that will increase volume to what our first design feature of East San Carlos is here. I'm not sure what's right, but let's think about, again, the increased volume that the 101 Holly exchange will produce on this, this street. And I actually do have one last point. I'm sorry. I'll be quiet on other areas there, maybe. What, five years ago, the decision was made to put bicycle lanes north-south on Industrial Road. We narrowed lanes to 10 feet, which is narrow, two lanes each way, and that, right now, is our major route. This is going to be, I think, much better. It's close to the depot, where people actually bike and commute, where they, it's a lane that goes north and south. Most importantly, it's part of our whole Samhain County major route, from Redwood City through San Carlos to Belmont. It is Old County Road. And so hopefully, that this will become the lane of choice for bicycles. But eventually, long-term, would like to think about, does it change anything 10 years, five or 10 years later from now, when we repaint stripes on Industrial, could, does that maybe become a place where bicycle lanes go away? I'm always concerned with semi-trucks making right-hand turns on Industrial, and we have bicycles on that. So again, no direction to change it. It's a separate project, but it's something to think about long-term. If, again, this becomes successful, and it is the primary transportation for bicycles, and it's safe, we may be able to increase safety by eliminating what I consider a risk area on Industrial, and a much better choice. So those are my input for you to consider when you come back with a more final plan. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you. So with that, I believe those are the two reports on 7A and B. 8 is also a study session. This is review of our marketing and branding initiatives. Mr. Sewicki, you have this one? 8A, we are on. And I do have some speaker cards that we will be covering later here
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council, and Redevelopment Agency Chairman and Board Members. I'm Mark Sewicki, Economic Development and Housing Manager. This study session item, as well as items 9A and 9B on the new business agenda, relate to your three-year strategic goal to plan for and implement long-term financial sustainability in San Carlos. They're also instruments to achieve your six-month strategic objective to develop a consistent branding image, marketing messages, and materials for business attraction and increased retail sales. These branding and marketing initiatives are funded by restricted redevelopment agency funds and have no negative impact on the general fund, but are expected to spur economic activity and thus grow sales tax receipts and property values in the long term. Over a year ago, council selected North Star Destination Strategies, a national leader in branding communities, to conduct research and provide creative ideas and strategies for implementing a branding and marketing campaign for San Carlos. North Star's research included dozens of interviews and contact with 83 stakeholders, over 750 responses to a community survey, actually, that was a record, I believe, by their standards, 388 responses from non-residents regarding their awareness and perceptions of San Carlos. of San Carlos. North Star presented its research findings to the Economic Development Advisory Commission and then continued to work with EDAC and a smaller creative subcommittee to develop a brand message platform, visual concepts, and logo ideas. Staff, EDAC, and the subcommittee asked the council to receive this presentation tonight from North Star and, after providing your feedback, approve the direction recommended. After North Star's presentation, three members of the creative subcommittee have also asked to very briefly provide you with some additional context and insight from their perspective. They are Gary Wiesinger, the Chair of EDAC, Louise De La Maggiore, a chamber member and a chamber representative on the committee, and Keith Tabachek, one of your most recent EDAC appointees. Thank you, and please let me introduce Ed Barlow from North Star Destination Strategies.
So, just before we get started, about how much time do you expect for your presentation to take?
About 15 minutes.
15 minutes? Good, great. Thank you.
Great. Well, thanks, Mark, and Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to give you this update. I'm Ed Barlow with North Star Destination Strategies, a community branding firm. We've worked with over 120 communities across North America. So, the project here in San Carlos is going well. We're not quite finished, but we'd like to give you this update. At North Star, we like to say your brand is what people say about you when you're not around. And every community certainly has a reputation, but not every community has effective ways of communicating that. So, if your brand is what people say about you when you're not around, branding is what you do about it. It's managing that reputation. This is my idea of an hourglass. This is our process at North Star. So, all of the research, we're a research and branding firm, not an advertising agency. So, all the research goes into the top of that hourglass. We learned about San Carlos from within the community. Mark mentioned how engaged the community is. That 759 responses to the community survey is a record for us, so we're very impressed. The consumer area there is looking from the outside in. And then, we also examine your neighbors and your competition. We take all of that research, all of that information, and narrow that to strategic insights. And then, we develop a strategic recommendation for San Carlos. And following the approval of that recommendation, we move into imagination, or what most people consider branding, and that's the creative, which certainly includes a logo and a line, but it is so much more than a logo and a line. You want your brand to be about emotion and experience. Also, in the imagination phase is brand action or implementation recommendations. And so, we are in the bottom half of that hourglass at this point in the project. And then, we certainly will make recommendations to you on evaluation, how to measure your success of your efforts. So, we take research and move into strategy. We then take strategy into creative and creative into action. So, we're, those three areas that we look at about San Carlos and where they overlap is where we think San Carlos is differentiated. I can't go through all of the research. It would take far too long, but 15 to 18 different pieces of research done on behalf of San Carlos in those three different areas. I'll highlight just a few to give you some background. We certainly had a lot of information from within the community about the great community of San Carlos and the many assets and the pride that everyone has here, as evidenced by their responses. Again, looking from the outside in, with the Consumer Awareness and Perception Study, we did this in two different markets, San Mateo County and then three outer counties. And so, we terminated folks based on the response of how familiar you are with San Carlos. And you can see that in that outer ring, almost 60% not familiar of 388 responses. But a few questions from this same piece. We ask about the city of good living. We learned a lot about that from within the community, a lot of pride. People told us, whatever you do, don't change that. We love that. And it is a great line, but it's not known in the marketplace. And even as far as your neighbors, the people in those two outside markets would give that to Palo Alto over San Carlos. A lot of dining comments came up in our research, so we asked this question, and we asked people to pick two communities, the best dining in the, on the peninsula. San Carlos with low delivery there. Best source for building products. We learned a lot about that in the research. San Carlos identified as the best source, but almost half of the people surveyed didn't know. So, it shows a great opportunity for growth there for San Carlos. And then, a general description of San Carlos from the outside looking in. Charming downtown and focused on your central location. As I mentioned, we looked at the competition. And as you can see from your neighbors and your competition around, a lot of similarities in the color palette and logos and marks usually are leaves or trees. So, by a, we will get into later in the process, developing a color palette, and that will be an easy way to distinguish San Carlos. So, as I mentioned, the neck of that hourglass, we get to a strategic recommendation for San Carlos. This is not creative language. It is not really for public consumption. It's for brand drivers and the teams that will be implementing the brand, the city, the different entities across the community, and it will guide the development. It's basically the foundation for your brand. For those seeking the charm of a close-knit community complemented by commercial and economic vitality, San Carlos, at the peninsula's midpoint amidst the Bay Area and Silicon Valley, strikes the ideal balance between world-class access and hometown atmosphere, so you have the environment for achievement and the comfort of belonging. So, and as a part of our research presentation, I'll share this slide with you as well, just kind of as a warning. Quickly, things that can derail your brand, so you'll certainly want to keep these in mind as you start to develop it and put it to work. You certainly don't want to make a contest to identify your slogan. You don't want to appoint a large stakeholder group to approve creative. I'll use a bad example here, but if, you want your brand to be a thoroughbred. So, if you're building a thoroughbred, if you have a large group building that thoroughbred, you're going to end up with a six-humped camel, is how I like to describe that. You don't want your community to vote among several logo choices. Logos are very subjective things, and again, your brand is not just about your logo. Your brand strategy, you certainly want to keep that to yourself before implementation. You don't want to apply strict controls to your brand. You want your private sector to be able to use it. I mean, there will be, we will provide graphic standards. You will want some rules in place, but you want people to be able to participate in your branding effort and extend the brand across all sectors. You don't want to present your identity and ask for public feedback before you're able to put it to work. Don't engage the press for the first time before a rollout. And you certainly don't want to ignore your culture and heritage and only focus on what you want to be. Don't proceed without research, so check. Congratulations. And again, don't make your logo just about a line, and don't make your brand just about a logo and a line. So, from strategy, we move into creative. So, as Mark mentioned, we had a small committee here in San Carlos to review written concepts and visual directions for the brand. The following represents their recommendations as well as North Star. And again, these are recommendations, and the final deliverable from North Star will be these recommendations in printed and electronic format. The community is still in control of how this is put to work and has complete discretion in how the brand is represented. Some communities will take North Star recommendations and duplicate them exactly. Others will make significant changes to them with their local partners. But if you remember this strategy, it's one of a balance of world-class access and small-town atmosphere. Even outside folks during the research pointed to those same aspects of life in San Carlos. So, here you have an image of a businessman in a situation of balance with a headline, "Making a Living," "Making Memories," both possible right here in San Carlos. And that ghosted back picture set here in San Carlos gives it the context for the community. The ad itself structured very much focused on balance with that body copy in the middle. So, you can take different aspects of San Carlos and feature them in different ways. And you'll see a logo placeholder there at the bottom, but we'll get to logos here in just a minute. A retail ad for San Carlos. Find a great deal, find a great time, not just about the purchase. Again, your brand, about your, about emotion and experience. So, it's the experience people can have here in San Carlos, just not picking up what they need. And then, your body copy there in the middle.
So, can I ask you, what are we missing? Are we supposed to be reading something there in the middle? Is that important?
It's not, it's, I'm summarizing it for you. It's not important, and it's just kind of a placeholder, but it's, that body copy gives you the freedom to focus on who your specific audience is and how balance applies to that and is attractive to that audience and how they can find that here in San Carlos. Again, with building materials, we chose a brick to feature, building a business, building a life, again, the focus there on balance. And a dining ad. Feed your body, feed your soul. Now, a brand identity guide is going to show you how you extend this in many different ways. We just show, at this point in the process, full-page ads because it communicates more quickly the idea behind the creative direction. So, again, part of this creative process is a logo. This logo is not meant to replace your city seal. They both can work together. Your city seal certainly has a place on very official documents, but the logo is meant for marketing messages to be persuasive and compelling, connected with imagery and body copy as well, or however it's presented. The recommended logo from the Small Creative Committee. You'll see the bench there, and that's a signature bench in San Carlos, matching those that you have throughout the community. So, you've got the relaxed element of the bench, which points to the research of the charming community, but you have that coupled with a classic sophisticated type styles. You know, on first glance, a logo, not do all of your heavy lifting. You have to do a lot of work behind it where people can make their relationship, that emotional connection to a logo. The Nike swoosh, some people may not know that's the wings on Mercury Shoes, but they, all the work they've done behind it allows you to make that connection with that product. The recommended strap line. City of Good Living. We think that's a great line, but as you saw in the research, not really known in the marketplace. So, we think you can do a lot of great things with this line. You can change it out a little bit, so depending on your audience. It could be the city of good living, the city of good business, good fun, good ideas, good opportunity, good dining, good building materials, good kids. So, I'll share a few slides with you here about other considerations that were reviewed. From the written concept focused on balance, this is a visual direction. You can, it's a bit softer and safer, a little more subtle, but again, centered on ideas of balance with a headline of company time, family time. Other logo considerations, just as you have a signature bench here in San Carlos, also a lamp post, the lower right, certainly a more relaxed conceptual idea of the charming nature here in San Carlos. Other logo suggestions during the process, San Carlos is just, it's a pretty name. It looks good, just written in many different ways. We also paired it with some iconic architecture features found here in San Carlos. So, as far as next steps go for the project, assuming after your discussion, after your, after providing your feedback, if the council endorses these recommendations, we'll move ahead with the brand print process, develop the brand identity guide, which is the logo and line and creative expressions of the brand, and develop the final brand print report, which will include the research that formed the strategic recommendation, which then guided the creative developments represented in the brand identity guide, which I'll share an example from another community, just to give you an idea of what you will be seeing in your brand identity guide. I won't go through the details of this, but Overland Park, Kansas, an acclaimed community outside of Kansas City with a commitment to excellence and superior performance across the community, a logo for them, and they needed considerations for different entities, and just a color treatment does that. At the top, you see a color palette. We will certainly provide that color palette, as I mentioned, in your brand identity guide. They are consistently ranked as the best place to live, the best place to work, so we took those rankings and recommended this sort of direction for them. Their tagline, "Above and Beyond by Design," a very well-planned community. A subhead, "One Great Town by Design, a Great Place for Kids, the Perfect Childhood by Design." A dining ad, an economic development ad for them, an economic development packet, a visitor guide. You can see the color blocking, blue being for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, an annual report example. And so, following the brand print report and the brand identity guide, the next step with a strategic plan, and we have provided San Carlos with a proposal for the development of a two-year strategic plan or an action plan for implementation. It originally was part of our response to the RFP last year for this project, but the staff asked us to list that as an optional task for your later approval. So, it's my understanding that EDAC, the Small Creative Committee, and the staff are recommending that we move forward, or that San Carlos is, San Carlos moves forward with the brand amp phase of the project. So, strategic implementation of a brand is critical. It's probably the most challenging aspect of a new brand or of community branding. So, it is a roadmap for putting your brand to work across the community. We will look at those five top areas and how you can extend your brand in those areas. Organization, community, infrastructure, can even work with projects like the connectivity on the east side and how your brand can work there, certainly engaging the private sector and businesses and attracting visitors. It's connected to your budgets, timelines, your priorities, and accountability. Again, this is where we take creative to action. It's, it shows you how you can look at your community as a 3D canvas for your new brand. And I'll just quickly click through some examples that show you how this will come to you. It's organized by objectives and tactics. Again, for Overland Park, these are examples of newsletters or flyers. We will treat some of our recommendations creatively to show you how they can work. Again, websites, very cost-effective way to communicate. Again, the format is objectives and tactics. You can see there at the top, responsibility, priority, timing, costs.
Can I just ask a quick stop there? So, are you moving into 9A yet? I mean, is it, or is this still 8, Mark?
Yes.
No, I just want to make sure we don't go too far into 9A here. I mean... I mean, I just have a couple more.
Review where you're going, but I want to make sure we stay with 8.
Okay. Just, and as far as timelines that will be included, you'll see year one, year two, which months we recommend them to occur in, who's responsible, what the funding source is. You can see the brand here in Overland Park, extended to their farmer's market, fresher by design. And again, connected to budgets and recommendations made along those lines. So I certainly appreciate the time today to give you the update. We're enjoying this project immensely and look forward to continuing the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Let me, we have actually two speaker cards, there may be more that want to speak, but we have two people from our Economic Development Advisory Group, Gary Wissinger and Keith Tabacki, maybe. Can we get public comment first here? I'd really be interested. You're the guys who did a lot of work and would love for you to share your ideas. Gary?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Gary Wissinger, resident and chair of EDAC, as well as a member of the Economic Development Partnership. So about three years ago, when we created the Economic Development Plan, we identified a marketing strategy as one of our key priorities. When the Economic Development Partnership, which is a partnership of EDAC, city staff, the Chamber, and HIA formed and brainstormed and prioritized, we also identified a marketing strategy as one of our top priorities. And in fact, it was our first big one, and we created the draft strategy that fed into the work that North Star has done. It was our, the top priority, or one of the top priorities for both groups because it is quite simply, we believe, one of the best ways we can solve the financial problems, fiscal problems that San Carlos has. And we all know that it's much better to solve those problems by growing and by generating revenue from economic activity as opposed to raising tax rates or cutting city services. The best way for us to grow economic activity is to draw more buyers and more businesses to San Carlos. And as the data showed, you know, we love San Carlos, we know how good the dining is, we know how great Laurel Street is, we know how great the east side is, the great majority of the people around us don't know that. You know, the people in Belmont, and San Mateo, and North, and Redwood City, and south, don't realize how good those things are. And we need a clear, compelling marketing strategy to bring those people, those consumers, into San Carlos to dine and shop, and businesses to buy here, new businesses to locate here, and get more of the tens of thousands of people who commute past us on 101 every single day to come in and spend more, some of their dollars, generating sales tax revenue with us. And I think the work that North Star has done is, they did some exceptional research. I think they really got at the heart of what we have to offer and what distinguishes us from the region. The idea of balance, I think, is spot-on, and I think they created a great platform that we can go, take in a lot of different directions to attract consumers, attract business purchasers, attract additional businesses to San Carlos, generate that economic activity, and help us resolve our financial problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'll finish with, I strongly encourage, you know, with your feedback certainly, I strongly encourage you to approve the branding platform, as well as the additional work that we're proposing with North Star.
Great. And thanks for all your work. Keith?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to read from a prepared statement if we're good tonight. My name is Keith Tabachek. I was appointed to the San Carlos Economic Development Advisory Commission earlier this year, and since that time, I've been a member of the EDAC Subcommittee working on the branding platform that is being discussed here this evening. From my perspective, I believe this is an effective and appropriate representation of San Carlos to both the business community and equally to the workforce that the business community would seek to attract and/or retain in order to succeed at their own objectives. I believe that is a critical linkage, that we're targeting not just businesses themselves, but the workers and the employees that make those businesses run. As the Senior Director for Sun Microsystems Corporate Real Estate Department, I was responsible for a 13 million square foot portfolio of real estate, spanning more than 350 locations. And among my responsibilities in that capacity were the analysis and recommendations of market entry opportunities for Sun's core businesses. Where do we need to be, how do we need to be there, and why is it important? In addition, I was responsible for assessing the factors that influence our ability to attract and retain skilled talent in every one of those markets. And that assessment of factors generally within the corporate real estate industry includes what are commonly accepted, six primary considerations. One of the main considerations for most large organizations is the ability of the organization to attract and retain skilled talent. In that context, the Bay Area in particular, San Carlos here on the peninsula, represents a high-density and business-rich geography. And in that type of combination, where you have a lot of people, a lot of activity, a lot of businesses, it is a particularly highly-weighted factor to appear desirable to that workforce because there's competition for that skilled resource. The belief of many organizations is that workers seek, in the business context, to achieve the optimal work-life balance, and work-life balance is a key consideration. That particular phrase is what we focus on. In that context, minimizing commute and transit times is one of the factors that we look to as a point of leverage for decision-making. And being close to the office as opposed to being on the road is a desirable outcome. In these desirable, high-demand geographies, we want our workers to spend time either where they are or where they're going. I think this branding platform discussed tonight achieves two of these key factors. It shows that balance is a desirable outcome for both companies and their workers, and it shows that San Carlos, which is particularly well-positioned in the peninsula, is able to support those workers as well as the companies. I believe that's an effective message. We have the community that employees will seek, and we have the resources that employers would be looking for. And I recommend that this proposal be strongly considered and adopted by the council.
Great. Thank you very much, Keith. Anybody?
Louise.
Yeah, I will. Louise, and anybody else who'd like to speak on this item would be welcome to do so now. I just wanted to start with those gentlemen that did some of the work. Hi, welcome.
So did she.
Good evening. My name's Louise Delamajora, and I'm also a member of the Subcommittee for the Strategic Brand Proposal that's being discussed tonight. And as a San Carlos resident for 13 years, community liaison for Sequoia Hospital, active member of the San Carlos Chamber, along with being a former sales and marketing professional for Levi Strauss for 25 years, I'm familiar with the importance of brand identification. And one of the things that I think that this, the strategy points out, how important it is for all of us to realize how it is so extremely important that the rest of the communities around us recognize how it's important that people know that San Carlos is the best choice on the community to live here, to work here, to dine here, to shop here, and also to get the word out for those people who don't shop here, that it might be a good idea to do that, to shop San Carlos. And from that business perspective, this strong brand identity that North Star has presented is very, very important to give us that special personality. And by developing the platform that is absolutely dead-on, gives a unique flavor of San Carlos, which we can attract other businesses to San Carlos, and also support the new business that come into the area. And with the brand strategy showing that it communicates balance, it gives the attitude and spirit of our residents who live here, and it also shows that the city supports that attitude and spirit. And by adopting this dynamic strategy, we're going to give added value to those who shop and already shop and dine in our city, and to invite those others that might shop and encourage them to do so. This is also going to bring another opportunity within our community that we've shown in the past, that we really strengthen. And some of those things, the existing partnerships and collaborations that have taken place in San Carlos, and this whole strategy will enforce that, will reinforce it. Some of the past things that we've already, that's taken place in San Carlos, is the partnership between hot harvest nights and local businesses. So this will absolutely reinforce that. The Art and Wine Festival, which again, brings in businesses, and that communicates that. Also, the Youth Advisory, the Young Consumer Champions, Park and Rec Foundation, and of course, all the businesses at the Chamber of Commerce. So I do ask you and invite you to support this brand strategy and North Star's approach. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else speak on this? Okay. Good. Turn it over, council. This is a study session, so any questions or comments directed toward staff on this would be welcome now. Anybody want to go first?
Oh, I'll go.
Mr. Gasselli.
Mr. Barlow? I have a status report. I don't know if you're familiar with it. Status report in front of me.
Yes.
Could you tell me where you are on that?
Where we are on the status report?
Because it was done two months ago, on June 7th, and some of these are incomplete, so I'm just curious where you are on this status report.
We are to the point where we're approaching the development of the brand identity guide. The visual concepts or looks, directions, presentation has been made, and that recommendation has been shared with you today. So we will, as I mentioned, our next steps will be moving into the brand identity guide development and then the final report.
Okay. When the report is completed, are you going to be giving it to us verbally, or are you going to mail it to us, or how are you going to give it to us?
It is a hard, there will be a final online presentation to the staff of that. There is, and there is an optional presentation, if you would like me to come out and do that. I think that's in the 9A or one of the other elements. So that is an optional request that you can make for me to come out and present that to you in person. We'll certainly make that online ahead of that to EDAC and the staff. But we will provide discs and a printed copy of the final report.
When do you anticipate that that would all be done?
That depends on your decisions here. Tonight, we're probably anywhere from two to, say, four months to that final report, depending on your decisions tonight.
Okay, thank you. Through staff, I was obviously confused because it's the last meeting, and I don't think you were here, Mr. Weiss, so I, you know, maybe I'll speak to Mr. Moore or whomever. I was under the impression, and perhaps I'm incorrect, that this was going to be the final report given to us tonight. And I guess I misunderstood the whole concept of this.
Yeah, because the marketing program's going to be an ongoing thing if the council chooses to embark upon it. I mean, we've budgeted a couple of $100,000 within our economic development plan for this purpose, and the idea was to come up with the brand, the idea, the message, turn that into a deliverable in terms of, you know, whether that be an infomercial, or pins, or full-page ads, but a strategy in terms of how to get the message out. Once we have that, then we would look to an advertising firm to actually implement, to buy those ads, to place those ads and create it. So this is but one part of a strategy that gets you to an ongoing program that hopefully, you know, this city, this council, but more importantly, the city can embrace as being something that puts its message out beyond just San Carlos. Certainly, it will help, I think, in terms of bringing the community together relative to sharing an image, sharing a message, but the idea is that, you know, there are many opportunities here that we can share with people beyond the boundaries of San Carlos, both on the peninsula, but also in the east bay. I think with the idea that we can bring people to the east side in particular for those purchasing opportunities, to generate sales tax, hopefully enhance property values, and in general, just enhance the image of this community, both inside and outside of its borders.
When Mr. Barlow indicated that it's two to four months, does that tie into 9A, or is that two to four months for just 8A, and then 9A is a longer time?
That would be 9A. That would be, the next step is to retain a firm to work with us for the, what they're calling the brand amp, that will identify the deliverables that would then be used as part of the ongoing marketing program.
But again, I'm confused. We haven't finished, he indicated that it would take two to four months to finish the original status report, and so I'm very confused on this. I apologize.
You're fine. No, I am too.
So let me just rewind. At the last meeting, we approved an addendum to a contract for someone to come here and give us a report.
And perhaps, Mr. Mayor, I can clarify that a little bit.
Okay, if you could. I'd appreciate it. That's why I'm confused, Mr. Seve, when, I understood that that was approved at our last meeting, this would be our final report, then we'd move into 9A. And now I'm hearing it's two to four months to finish 8A. At least, that's what I was just told. So I'm confused.
We're at the end of this first phase, which is the brand print component of this, and this is it. I mean, the platform has been developed as presented by Mr. Barlow, the image with that platform has been presented to you, and that's it for this first part. We can't go any farther without your consent. So hopefully, that clears it up. This is the end of the line for this first phase.
Okay, so this status report then combines 8A and 9A. And I apologize if you don't have this, we have this in our, I'd be happy to show it to you, but I mean, I'm confused.
Yeah, I mean, I see that, but it's, we're at the bottom, stage three imagination, I think. Isn't that correct, Mark? Maybe there's a couple of extra steps, but we're at the end of this component of it, right, Mark? I mean, we can't go any farther without your guidance.
I appreciate that. I'm just trying to understand what we're buying or what we bought and what we're supposedly asking to buy. You are looking at the brand print process. I'm sorry, Mark, I apologize. You are looking at the brand print process, which is the first phase, not the brand amp. The brand amp is. Right, that's what I'm holding up. So I'm asking when it's going to be done. I'm told two to four months, now Mr. Seve is telling me, oh no, no, we're at the end of where we are. So what's, where are we?
It'll take two months to finish the brand print. They need your approval of the creative to go forward. They're not going to finalize it until they know that council is.
So they are connected.
The brand print.
9A is connected to this.
If you don't approve 9A, they can be done in two months. If you approve 9A, it'll take maybe four months to complete that part of the process, which is an implementation plan, which gives us action and strategies, priorities, costs, timelines. That's not included in the brand print. The brand print is merely, this is the creative, this is our suggestion of a logo, a look, a message.
So this report that I'm holding, this piece of paper, combines 9A. There's 9A items on here.
There's not.
Okay, then I'll repeat the question. How long will it take, assuming we're in a vacuum here, how long would it take to finish 8A?
Two months.
Two months. Okay, so two months, and then this contract is done.
Correct.
Okay. And if we approve the other, would it take another two months, or two to four months?
Another two months beyond. So totally four months.
So if we approve 9A, then it'll be another two months.
Correct.
So that's where Mr. Barlow was indicating, two to four months.
Correct.
Okay. I apologize, I was confused. I was under the impression that this was it tonight. That's what I thought. We added the addendum to the contract, someone to come out and give us a final product, I thought. I was obviously misinformed or confused. So I'm just trying to understand, and perhaps other council members have the same question? Perhaps they're smarter than I am, I don't know. So anyway, thank you.
Yeah, let's get some other thoughts here. So other thoughts here from council?
Well, I'll go. I don't want to get into whether I'm smarter than you or not, Mr. Gasselli. I'll let that go. I promised the city manager I'd keep an open mind about this, so I like how we're not changing the city's seal. I just don't feel that I'm the target audience for this branding. There was nothing that I saw tonight that I like, but I also think that's because I'm 28, I don't have a family, well, I have a wife, but I don't have kids. The whole balance thing, it makes sense, but I'm just, I'm not in that life. So I don't know, it's hard for me to, you know, I try to do my best to sit in someone else's seat and to view things for your average citizen, and I think, I think it makes sense. I just, I don't know, I'm looking at this as a consumer. And as a consumer, the only thing I liked that I saw was the one ad with the little girl, balance scene, walking towards like a lake or something. That was the only thing that remotely resounded with me. The new logo with the bench just makes me think old. And, you know, so, and I like clean stuff. The fact that I'm wearing a blue shirt and not a white shirt tonight says a lot. Normally, I just wear black and white. I don't like too much color, I don't like all these other things, but, so I understand the whole clean look of it, but it just reminded me of old. I didn't like the ads, but I think that made. I didn't like the ads, but I think that may just be because of me, and I don't, I don't know. From everything I'm hearing from a lot of people who've been, who've dealt with branding and marketing and sales, this is the good way for us to go. So I have to lean on the advice of a lot of others on this one, because it just doesn't seem for me, or for probably my peer group, that this is, would make any sense to us. But I also don't think we're the target audience either. You don't see San Carlos, we're not, we don't have that. We have young people, but we don't have an abundance. They're not the main group we're going for. We're going for young families, we're going for seniors, we're going for businesses. So I get that. So I'm trying to reconcile that with my personal preferences. So I don't know what to say. I think, I think this could work. I really do, and I just, it's hard for me to get behind something that I personally don't like. But I do think EDAC has done their research. I think we have a lot of smart people on that subcommittee and on that commission itself. And I think I'm going to have to go with their recommendation on this one, because I just, I can't reconcile it. I'm sorry, I just can't. I just, it really didn't speak to me at all. But I'm going to go with the recommendation of that, because they have different eyes. That's why we have commissions. That's why we try to balance them as much as possible. So, yeah, I guess we'll talk about it in 9A, but I don't really have much to add just to the consultants, if you're wondering where I'm coming from. It just, it wasn't young at all. So I don't know if you want to change that, or if it'd even worth changing, but that's, yeah, that's all the thoughts I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I've started a bunch of companies, and the one thing I've learned is that I really, this is part of the process that I find the most painful. Naming companies, coming up with logos, doing that whole marketing thing, that's why you hire great people to do that, and I walk out of the room. So I appreciate what you're doing. I respect the work. I know it's important. I'd rather chew tinfoil and shave my head with a cheese grater. This is painful stuff.
So I'm not the only one.
No, no.
That said, there were only three things that came to mind. One was the color palette. I would only ask that, there are a number of us who are mildly colorblind, and sometimes you get gray on gray. Please don't do that. We've had some challenges with maps over here, and I really need to go back and say, okay, what does this thing look like? So keep in mind, it's something that, a distinctive color palette with good contrast would be important. Number two, looking at the logo, the thing that comes to my mind, working in high-tech companies, is how would this look on a T-shirt? How would this look embroidered on a sweatshirt? It was line art heavy, and I would be curious in that respect, when you're trying to extend the brand to apparel wear, how does that come across? I think there does need to be some thought about the logo treatment for that. The last part, this is more of an extension. The airport is a valuable resource. It does bear our name. It is a historic landmark. It does draw a number of visitors. I didn't see anything in this exercise describing the San Carlos role in aviation history, what it means, the fact we have a museum. It is a destination airport. Sounds strange to say that, but we're one of the busiest in California. It's something that I wouldn't like to take advantage of. And with that, I will run screaming from the rest of the discussion.
So there's a, there's a pro and a con of waiting to give us a presentation. We don't get it in our package, we don't see it, we just wait, and then we saw it all this evening. And so what you get is, for me, will be a first reaction. I do like to get reports ahead of time and study them, and talk to people, and get input, and Google, and just have time. But just my first reaction is that we, and by the way, the nature of the work and what I saw, I'm not qualified as a very artistic person, but most of what I saw, I liked. Let me start off with that. Now, I'll let your skin get a little thicker, because what I see is, I think, six months of work. And I see, I think, the terms where we now have a look and we have a message. We have a look, which is a logo. We have a message, which is the city of good, all sorts of things. And we have, you know, a message of balance, different ways. And then the third thing is, we've spent a lot of money. And to me, I, you know, although what I saw, I liked, I just can't think why we didn't see this two weeks later, when you started. I mean, there's just, I don't see a lot there. I'm sorry. I mean, I may be off, but for someone to design a logo, again, I'm not an expert, but there are designers out there, there are people listed on Craigslist that, hey, I need three views by 10:00 AM in the morning. And I don't know, it just, I'm sorry, you did a risk by giving me a presentation. I was waiting to see a lot. I started salivating when you said, you know, our east side, 75% of our east side produces our sale, 75% of our sales tax comes from our east side. You said 16% of the people recognize that this is construction spending, and half the people don't even know it's even here. And so I'm kind of jumping ahead, and that's the weakness that I have. So please consider that I'm impatient. I really like to jump ahead. I'm not patient with this stuff. But I just see us at the infancy, and maybe that's what the contract said, Mark, but it's, we're on step 1A here, is how I feel. And that's my input. So with those strong statements, with all of us and comments, please, you're welcome to share and give us a little feeling on what we've missed and what we have right. Please, by the microphone, please. That you don't see much. The bulk of our process is research, so that the month that led up to the summer was involved in all of the research and the different instruments. So that research presentation was made a few months ago. We then moved into the bottom half of that hourglass, so the summer has been spent on that creative. So again, the bulk of the project for North Star is research, and then we move into those imagination elements. But again, probably 80% of what we do is the research that got us to the strategy, and then the shorter period of time in the creative development.
Great. Good point. Thank you, Ed. Any other thoughts? This, again, is a study session. We're here just to provide input to our consultant and staff. Mark, would you like to comment a little bit? Give us a little guidance on this?
I could just add that North Star gave several presentations to EDAC along the way, one of which was an understanding and insights presentation, which was all of the research they had done, like 100 slides worth of research. And we tried to just capture a little bit so that we wouldn't have a very weighty presentation tonight. So there's a lot more that you could see on this if you wanted to, but we did try to slim it down. For them to end up producing the brand print report, that's what they would do. They would compile all that and give it to us in a report. Some communities buy this service just for the research. They don't do anything with the logo and the message. They want all that research to help in their economic development strategies. So that alone is, when I spoke to other communities, when we were going through the RFP process, that was one of the things I learned, that they love this just for the research that they got. They found that to be of greater value than what they spent.
So just to articulate, you're saying there, you have in EDAC a file and an understanding with good research to help us with the next phase of this project?
Yes, all of the stakeholder responses, all of the responses from outside of the community were very, very interesting and valuable.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I actually have a question from the gentleman from North Star.
Mr. Klein.
Because I wasn't here when we decided to do this. This was before I got on the council. So I had a quick question. You mentioned that no one knew that our logo was the city of good living. And I, I think that's valid. I grew up on the peninsula, and I can name two logos, minus ours. Daily City is the gateway to the peninsula, and Redwood City is climate best by government test, because they both have giant signs that say that. And that's it. Can't tell you Belmont's, can't tell you Menlo Parks, can't tell you Woodside. So I get that. Now, after you do all of this, and maybe this leads into 9A, and I don't want to get too far into that, do you retest, like a year, two years down the road? What is the success rate? Does suddenly a jump where everyone now knows San Carlos is the balance or city of good, whatever? I mean...
Well, it just depends on your implementation and the work you do behind whatever the tagline is, or whatever your mark is. We will make recommendations as part of the brand print process. If you remember the hourglass, that era that took you back up to the top, we'll make some recommendations on how you can evaluate the success of your efforts, which then, of course, is going to give you more understanding, and then make that, your future implementation or creative executions more effective. So yes, we will make some recommendations on how you can do that as part of the brand print.
Okay. That's my only question. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Great. Thank you very much. So let's move on to 9A then.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you indicated you wanted to put D ahead of A.
Oh, yes. Okay. Sorry. Good point. Mr. Gasselli, thank you very much. So 9D is consideration adopting resolution amending the adopted sewer budget, increase appropriate sewer master plan from $300,000 to $355,000, authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with RMC Water and Environment. Mr. Wild.
Mayor and council member, when we're done with this project, San Carlos will be known as the city of good wastewater collection systems.
Good. We could add that.
Power to the flusher.
Unfortunately, you know, people probably won't notice it because it's underground, but this is a very important project for us to meet our requirements under the San Francisco Baykeeper Consent Decree. It was budgeted at $300,000 in the capital improvement budget, and we are asking that it go to $355,000. We went out and did a selection process for consultants, and these consultants don't come cheap either. They were all around that range of $300,000. RMC was at the top. We had a selection committee that included a businessperson, Thomas Knudsen, a resident and retired public works director, Neil Cullen, representative from the county, Mark Chow, myself, and Ray Chan from the city, and went through a rigorous selection. We started with four, got down to two, interviewed those two, and RMC stood out for the fact that they've actually gotten cities from having a lot of sanitary sewer overflows to significant reductions in their overflows. And they've written papers on sewer collection systems and very expert at mathematical modeling, which is what we, the heart of this assignment is. So we do recommend them. In the process of their, making their proposal, they suggested some optional tasks, and I thought these were good ideas to do, the things we're going to need to do eventually, and it makes sense to package them into this proposal. One of the optional tasks was to do some quality control on a project that we're doing that's a separate project, which is to do closed-circuit TV inspection of our whole collection system. And as the engineers, they can make sure the contractor's giving us good quality data. That's an $800,000 contract, and we want to make sure that when we're done, we have baseline information for our system. So the RMC proposal for that was $18,650. It's about 2% of the estimated cost of the cleaning project. So I think that's worth doing. Another assignment, another optional task that they recommended was to assess the conditions at our six pump stations, excuse me. And these are critical links in the system, because when they, if they fail, they overflow and they, everything coming into them overflows. And it can be a large overflow in a short period of time. So we didn't have that in our original task. They've been operating well for us. We get them serviced regularly, but if we're going to know what our needs are, we really ought to at least take a quick look at those critical resources, and that was about $18,000 to do that. And the other one was to try to package the capital program. You know, this, as I mentioned, there's a mathematical model that's the main part of this assignment, and it'll tell us which pipe is too small, if any of them are too large, and what things we need to do. But it comes out, you know, this one over here is too small, this one over here is too small, and it takes some art and science to package that into a capital program that we can build and build effectively. Which ones are in an easement? Which one, if we do that, which ones go out into a street? Maybe we can do a couple of things at once while we're doing that, rehabilitate some pipes. And so that's about a $25,000 assignment to do that. And I think it's well worth it, because we need to implement this program over just a five-year period. Our consent decree says it has to be done by 2017. So we really need to get a report that we can go off and charge and get done. So I would recommend the three optional tasks, and for a total of $355,000. So that does require amending the sewer budget to do that. That takes our reserves, they aren't really considered reserves, they're an unappropriated balance, but it takes our unappropriated balance from...
It's on the front page, Mr. White.
1.329 million to 1.274 million. Again, no connection with the general fund whatsoever.
Great. Thank you very much. And I want to thank your committee of health here in Citizens, Neil Cullen, Tom Knudsen, Mark Troy, and Ray Chan, and yourself for putting this all together. Thank you. Any questions of council? I don't have any speaker cards. Would anybody like to speak on 9A? Okay. With that...
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2010.
65.
65. Resolution amending the adopted sewer budget to increase the appropriation to the sewer master plan from $300,000 to $355,000, and authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with RMC Water and Environment.
Second? Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion on this? Okay. Rock call.
Councilmember Mon.
Yes.
Councilmember Gasselli.
Yes.
Councilmember Grokka is absent. Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Royce.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Second item now, a new business, we'll go back to 9A, is to adopt a resolution for the redevelopment agency board approving the contract with North Star Destination Strategies to complete its Brand Amp Marketing Implementation Strategy Recommendation Service and authorizing the executive director to execute the contract. Mark.
Thank you again, Honorable Mayor and City Council Agency Chair and Board Members, Mark Suicki, Economic Development and Housing Manager. EDAC and staff are recommending that the agency board approve a contract with North Star Destination Strategies to complete the Brand Amp phase of their branding marketing service at an amount not to exceed $29,000. I understand Exhibit A to the contract was inadvertently excluded from the agenda packet, but I believe copies have been subsequently provided to you. The Brand Amp extends North Star's work to date in research and development of brand and marketing concepts. As indicated earlier in the presentation, the Brand Amp includes North Star's expert recommendations on strategies, priorities, and costs for implementation of the brand. This will help us form a scope and budget, so that we can then hire a local firm to carry out an implementation plan, produce recruiting materials and ads, buy media space, anything else we want to do to extend the brand. Please note that when North Star was selected through an RFP process last year, this service was part of their original proposal. Staff had asked them to separate this piece so that we could review and approve it at a later date if we wanted to move forward. Please note that as well, that the selection committee's recommendation last year was to engage North Star for their national expertise, but then to retain Look Design, a local firm, to execute on the branding, marketing, implementation plan based on the concepts and research from the first phase that we conducted with North Star. The Brand Amp proposal is for a budget not to exceed $29,000, and that's inclusive of travel costs and an optional second presentation. North Star agreed to a $1,500 credit against their original proposal. If we forego another presentation, we could... If we forego another presentation, we could potentially save up to $5,000 on the next phase. There's no impact to the general fund for this. Again, branding and marketing is fully funded by the redevelopment agencies, restricted funds for economic development. The agency allocated $200,000 in its budget for fiscal year 2010-11. One of the alternatives, if you want tonight, is to defer this. I think staff is looking for council's support. You have the support from EDAC, from the creative committee, from staff on this. We would like to move forward. If council is feeling uncomfortable with this, we can take it a little slower. I think we might want to have a council subcommittee if we are to move forward. Perhaps you want to have a little bit more involvement. EDAC has been very involved in this over the past year, so if that's something you want to do, that could be one of your alternatives as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Questions?
Is there any public comment?
Oh, questions?
So Louise, I have you also for 9A. Would you like to speak? That was, you already spoke on that. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Would anybody like to speak on this item? Please. Brian, welcome.
Gentlemen, Brian Randall, resident of San Carlos, the city of good living for 40 years. I really do appreciate this city. It's so good. It's a city of good living, and that "city of good living" says it all. For heaven's sake, don't lose that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, move a motion to Resolution Number RDA-...
174.
Resolution of the Board of Directors of the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency approving agreement with North Star Destination Strategies for Economic Development Marketing Consulting Services.
Have a motion? Have a second?
I'll second the motion just to have discussion.
Okay. Motion and second. Let's get some discussion going before we take the vote. Thoughts?
Well, first of all, I think, as was mentioned by my colleagues, if you get four people in a room, you're going to get different ideas of how to design stuff. And I can appreciate Mr. Ahmad's comments about certain pain, and I don't think a subcommittee of this body is going to add much to the discussion, to be quite blunt. I think EDAC has done a marvelous job, despite my questions or my comments earlier perhaps about when is it going to be done or what are we paying for. I think EDAC did a terrific job. I think perhaps, at least in this council member's mind, I don't quite, I'm not quite sure I understood what I was buying last year. Now I guess I understand its research, basically, along with some other things. That's why I was asking when it was going to be done, and it's not done yet. But that being said, I think it's a valid point to try to improve our economic situation and let the other parts of the peninsula, as well as the rest of the Bay Area, know who we are. We're down this path a substantial amount of money. If we stop the process or delay it, it doesn't necessarily help us to get the word out. I would rather have had a local company do this because I think they have a little bit more of a pulse of what's going on, but through staff's comments, I understand that they're not really wanting to do it, and so we've got North Star to go into the second phase, which won't be research, but more active-type things perhaps that I might understand more. So despite my earlier comments or perhaps my insinuation, I will be voting for this tonight.
Other thoughts? Mr. Klein?
Yeah.
Looks like you're ready to say something there?
I guess. I'm having such trouble with it. This is just a horrible meeting for me. You have this, and then you have a green building ordinance. Stuff that's just not my forte. Yeah, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Griselli said. I think this is vitally important. I really hope it works. I'm just reminded, there's this commercial that came out a little while ago about the state of California and has the governor and Rob Lowe and Vanessa Williams, and they're all talking about how great California is. And all it really did was make me buy a California flag t-shirt that was in the video. So I really hope it works. I hope it'll drive people to San Carlos because I think sales tax leakage is killing us. I think the more revenue we can raise without raising taxes, just we'll continue to make the city better and better. So I'm going to go with it. Mr. Griselli is right. We've spent a lot of money already. We might as well put it out there. Hopefully it'll work. I'm glad we're not changing the seal. I'm glad it's, we're going to be the city of good living still, but possibly with a couple of other taglines. So I'll be voting for favor of this as well. I would like to see some cool t-shirts, though. But that's it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Let's call the vote, please.
Councilmember Maughn.
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Royce.
Yes.
That was an RDA vote?
That was an RDA vote. What's it?
Directors.
Directors.
Chair. I'll change it.
We'll let it go.
Yeah.
Good.
Thanks.
Good. That's for good. We're looking forward. A few months from now. That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we have 9B. This is to authorize the city manager to engage CGI communications to provide San Carlos with its community showcase video program.
Thank you again, Honorable Mayor and City Council Agency Chair and Board Members, Mark Suwicky, Economic Development and Housing Manager. EDAC and staff request your authorization to engage CGI communications to provide San Carlos with their community video showcase program. At no cost to the city, CGI will produce up to seven one-minute professional videos and host them on a site linked from our city website. The videos would include a welcome message with promotional or informational spots on shopping, dining, downtown, economic development, parks and rec, real estate, Chamber of Commerce, or any other subject of our choosing. CGI will seek sponsorship revenue from local businesses in exchange for having links to their businesses surrounding the video frame. If you approve, CGI estimates it would take up to 14 weeks to develop scripts, come and film, edit, and post the videos. Two members of EDAC have volunteered to work with staff as a steering committee to guide the project. If you are interested, I can show you some examples of the service used by neighboring cities. Otherwise, I'm available for your questions.
Okay. Questions?
Mr. Suwicky, I assume the only reason we have this on our agenda is because it's going to be on the city website. Is that correct?
Correct. Okay.
I have a question. Mr. Suwicky, you've watched the other videos from the other towns that have done this?
We have, and I actually have them linked if you want to look at some of them.
No, I just want to, well, I don't really personally care. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you see some of this stuff like this, and it looks really tacky and really dated sometimes, and I just want to make sure that this is going to look professional, isn't it, speak to California, but in San Carlos, but in two years, it's not going to be dated.
You can replace them if they do become dated.
Okay. And this, again, is no cost to us at all?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. I have no other questions.
Mr. Maughn?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be vying for this. I think I would point out to staff, I did have a conversation with our city manager this morning. There are a couple of points that do cause me a little concern. One is the fact that we own absolutely none of the copyright. So this property is, all media, all rights, all media worldwide in perpetuity belongs to CGI. Number two, it's on their servers. We have, I do not see any service-level guarantee of video availability or what happens when this company, if this company no longer existed, what happens to the video assets and things like that. To the fact that we've got no capital involved in here, I think our risk is minimal, but those are points that I am concerned about.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I had a chance not only to look at some of the videos that were recommended in the staff reports, some of the other cities searched around, and actually, the quality of the filming and the editing and so forth was quite good and flexible, and there were even some cities I looked at, I said, "That's that city? Wow, it looks good." Really good. So the only question I would have is to make sure we get legal counsel. In going through the contract, I'm not an attorney, but it talks about it could be terminated by either party for cause, and the way they define cause is if either party fails to perform any of the provisions. So I want to make sure, because this is, someone referred to it, it's not only high-tech, it's changing every month on how web advertising is being done with video and YouTube and things like that, and also it's with, because we're dealing with a large marketing company, how aggressive and rude they could get with what is on our webpage, even though the content is there, the types of advertising that they could add. So I just want to make sure we have some protection if it does get out of case, that we're able to have some say in getting out of the contract. If Mr. Rubens, is that reasonable on that?
Yeah, I was just reviewing the provision you were talking about. Could you repeat the question again?
So my question is, the wording here is that either party can terminate due to cause, and cause is defined if anybody basically does not perform any of the provisions. For example, our provision would be that we post this link on our webpage. So if we remove the link from a webpage, then are we out of the contract? I mean, to me, it's pretty vague what that contract...
Yeah, basically, this is a two-year contract, and those are valid points about how somebody could make an argument that there was a material breach or failure to perform, and then try to make an argument for cause. And I saw the copyright issue. I don't see that expressly stated here, but it may be that usually the producer of the video owns the copyright, but we could have a provision for licensing of the videos so that we can continue to use them even if they go out of business or beyond the termination of the contract. So those are some issues. It may be, though, that this is kind of a cookie-cutter approach that they're applying to all cities, and it's their business model. I'd be glad to talk with their council if there's any changes, but a lot of times, these contracts, you know, I could think of some other things that we could add to, but it may be that that's the program that they offer, but we could give that a try.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Would anybody like to speak on this? Did I ask that yet already? On this is 9B. Any other thoughts from council? Okay. Here, motion?
We're moving to just approve...
Just to approve a contract with this CG...
I'll move approval of...
CGI.
CGI Communications for the city manager to move forward with the contract.
Second. Motion and second. Rock call?
Councilmember Maughn.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli.
Yes.
Mayor Royce.
Yes.
9C. This recommended city council adopt 2010 California Green Building Standards Codes, CalGreen, Part 11, with mandatory Tier 1 energy efficiency standard provisions and modifications and amendments, and add Section 15.04125 to Chapter 15 of the San Carlos Green Building Ordinance. Welcome. And Chris, again, estimate about your presentation, just approximately, so expectation here? About?
Ten minutes?
Okay.
Maybe 15 minutes.
I just wanted to know.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council, Chris Valley, your building official. It's an honor this evening to present the San Carlos Green Building Ordinance. I'd like to take a moment briefly to thank all the stakeholders that provided input throughout the process. Their input was valuable. This, the ordinance is a good-faith effort by staff to create a document that reflects the go-between of all stakeholder input. It's an ordinance that has teeth, and it will impact the way buildings are constructed within this city. It's also an ordinance that other cities are eyeing as possible models, as they dovetail their efforts into CalGreen as well. So with that, we need to ask ourselves, why are we here? There's four, why am I here? There's four components to, well, four primary components to the San Carlos Green Building Ordinance. One is council's adoption of the Climate Action Plan, specifically Resolution 2009.080. We'll get to that in a little bit. The other is AB 32 and the Governor's Directive, which resulted in CalGreen, the new California State Green Building Standards Code. And another is a community's awareness that conventional building practices are simply unsustainable. And as a former carpenter, I can attest to that. Let's get into the Climate Action Plan for a brief moment, or specifically 2009, Resolution 2009.080. Establish, one of the bullet point items was establish energy standards for new construction and remodel projects that exceed Title 24 Energy Efficiency Standards by 15%. That measure will allow us to meet our greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, as stated in that first bullet point. Second is adopt a green building standard for all new development and major remodels. Third was develop a green building ordinance that is consistent with San Carlos or specific to San Carlos. The fourth bullet point is adopt a green building standard that require build-it-green Green Point lead or equivalent building measures, green building measures. Brief little comment about CalGreen. Again, it's the Governor's Directive to the California Building Standards Commission to create a green building code, in part with AB 32, which was to reduce our current greenhouse gas emissions to 1990 standards with the overall goal of 80% reduction by The code itself becomes mandatory, whether you like it, January 1, 2011. We have to enforce it. All cities up and down the peninsula need to enforce it. All cities that currently have green building ordinances need to enforce it. They need to dovetail their current green building ordinances or future green building ordinances into CalGreen itself. CalGreen also is the, obviously, the foundation of our ordinance. It involved input from building officials, construction industry officials, model code-writing bodies, environmental groups, representatives from Green Point rating programs, state agencies, and members of the public. There are other, there are five key elements of CalGreen. Some are very strong, and some don't have a whole lot of teeth to them. First element is the planning and design, addresses stormwater drainage, surface drainage, water collection, disposables, swales, et cetera. The second is energy efficiency. CalGreen states you shall meet the minimum energy efficiency requirements. That is where CalGreen lacks teeth. The San Carlos Green Building Ordinance mandates 15% above California energy efficiency standards. We hope to compensate for that little area there. Another area where I feel CalGreen has a fair amount of teeth is its efforts at 20% reduction in water usage through fixtures, built-in fixtures and so forth, and controls for outdoor water use as well. There's a particular home that I drive by on my way to work every morning. It can be raining cats and dogs in January, and the front yard sprinklers are going like crazy.
But that's not in San Carlos, I'm sure.
It sits in Belmont.
Belmont.
It's, the code addresses that. There's an enormous amount of waste, water waste, in our sprinkler systems and so forth. The ordinance, I'm sorry, the CalGreen also has provisions for construction demolition debris. Their minimum requirement is 50%. Our ordinance, CND ordinance, is at 60% reduction in recyclables from a job site. So our ordinance would supersede that. There also is provisions for building maintenance and operation at the end of each project. The builder or, well, the builder will be required to provide an operation manual for the property showing nearest public transit, how each fixture in the resident, or how each, you know, how the furnace operates, basically a user manual for the house, and hopefully it stays with the house. There are other provisions with regard to environmental air quality. It's now become codified with regard to fireplace emission limits, that Bay Area air quality, it dovetails now with the ruling by Bay Area air quality that fireplaces shall meet certain, fireplaces and pellet stoves and so forth shall meet certain emission limits. Also addresses indoor air quality, volatile organic compound limits for paints and carpets and so forth. Those are the five primary components of CalGreen. CalGreen also encourages local agencies to go beyond. They have two tier provisions. Tier 1 is 15% above, 15% above mandatory. Tier 2 is 30% above mandatory, somewhat far-reaching... CalGreen also encourages local agencies to go beyond. They have two tier provisions. Tier 1 is 15% above, 15% above mandatory. Tier 2 is 30% above mandatory, somewhat far-reaching. Tier 1 and Tier 2 can be adopted as mandatory, and it should be emphasized that all current and future green building ordinances must dovetail with CalGreen. When people hear Title 24, it's a phrase that's commonly used to address energy regulations primarily. Title 24, in fact, is the California Code of Regulations. It's Part 1 through 12 there. Those are the codes that we enforce. There's a lot to that. I should note that we're currently on the 2007 California Building Codes. In January, January 1, 2011, we'll be on the 2010 California Codes. And every single one of those codes has significant changes that staff and the applicant will have to keep pace with. Need to also make note that there's two new codes there, actually. One is up, is CalGreen, which is in green, of course. The other is Part 2.5, which is the California Residential Code. That is an entirely new code that we will receive training on, in addition to CalGreen, and that the applicant will need to adapt to. That's a critical component with regard to why the ordinance is what it is. Again, staff will receive training in all these, but there is significant changes coming down the chute, 2010, with everything. Let's move on to the outreach associated with the ordinance. We met with Carol Woods, our plan check engineer, and I had two meetings with various stakeholders from San Carlos Green, Sierra Club, Cool Cities, various architects, engineers, designers, contractors, developers, and residents of San Carlos. I also met with, the common theme of these meetings was consistency with other agencies, consistency with regard to review and enforcement internally, recognized methods of compliance, Build-It-Green Green Point LEED, California Energy Standards, and California Code are all inclusive with that. Stakeholders wanted something that was easy to understand, easy to comply with. There is a need for flexibility, to not mandate one specific point system, applicants' preferred flexibility, and that is included in the ordinance. One thing that the building division's been somewhat critiqued of more than anything else is our plan check turnaround time. And since I assume the role of building official, I've made consorted efforts to improve that, although that's an ongoing process. And the goal also was to have little impact to plan review turnaround time, allow choice for materials and methods, and then respect costs and where we're at with regard to our current economic state. We're, to some degree, not necessarily out of the woods yet, as many would probably agree. Additional outreach on my end was through local area building officials. I took, I made the effort of contacting the Energy, California Energy Commission and Building Standards Commission. The California Energy Commission provided some word changes that I will be going through in the next, or the last four slides, with regard to wording of the ordinance, which will help us get through, I hope, the facts and findings element of submitting our ordinance to the state agencies, that being the Building Standards Commission and Energy Commission. The Energy Commission is a hard one to get through. Get through them, and the Building Standards Commission is a little easier, so to speak. So what is the ordinance itself? It utilizes CalGreen as its foundation, being that CalGreen is mandatory January 1, 2011. It makes mandatory Tier 1 provision for 15% above Title 24 Energy Efficiency Standards. And here's the key, this is where our ordinance starts reeling in more projects than what CalGreen typically would. So our ordinance reels in new single-family residents like CalGreen, but we're also reeling in residential reconstruction, and those are the projects where you see three studs saved on the right side, and it's called a remodel. We're reeling those in in this project. We've, based upon the type of permits we've issued, we figured residential additions over 500 square feet would reel in a few more projects, new multifamily, and then new multifamily additions over 500 square feet. Then with regard to commercial slash non-residential projects, we're looking at, obviously, all new commercial buildings as covered under CalGreen. We're suggesting, I should say, staff is suggesting, commercial building additions over 500 square feet and mixed-use buildings as well. The ordinance recognizes naturally-recognized point systems, Build-It-Green Green Point LEED, as well as, once again, the California building, the energy efficiency standards and the code itself. We're, staff is currently working on what we're going to call a City Green Checklist for Use by Applicants. This will, I'm going to, it'll be basically a checklist, speaking in layman's terms, of building elements that a applicant could use to achieve 15% above Title 24 Energy Efficiency. We get a broad range of types of permit applications. We have homeowners who draw their own plans, and we also have big developers that have a full team of people that, you know, do all that for them. So what we're trying to do is address the broad range of applicants that we have with this process. And then, contrary to other green building ordinances, our ordinance does not have a voluntary time period. January 1, 2011, it's mandatory. This slide is fairly significant in that CalGreen in and of itself would probably only make up for 10% of the permits that we issue. Our green building ordinance, we think, you know, in a year, we can maybe have a little more data on this, but our green building ordinance, we feel, with the addition of residential additions, residential reconstruction, and enhanced commercial projects and so forth, we feel that we should be reeling in about 70 to 80%. I think 80% is a little far-reaching, and why I say 70 to 80%, talking about 70% to 80% of permits for additions and so forth, of all permits is what I'm trying to get at. So those are significant numbers, because CalGreen on its own, we're not doing a whole lot. But the green building ordinance, as it's written, we're reeling in more types of projects that will be affected by not only CalGreen itself, but by the mandatory 15% over Title 24 Energy. What does the San Carlos Green Building Ordinance do? Why not go further than Tier 1 Energy? Why not throw all of Tier 1 into this? Well, number one, the way the ordinance is written is it achieves our Climate Action Plan greenhouse gas emission goals, reduction goals, excuse me. It maximizes, and this is also very important, it maximizes current in-house expertise, resources, and staff knowledge. Our plan check engineer has been reviewing and researching Title 24 Energy Efficiency since the early 80s, and I, too, have been doing it for a while. It also, as stated earlier, maintains our plan check turnaround goals. It attempts to simplify permit review and compliance for applicants. It's a balance of stakeholder input. Everybody's input was included in this. It also does not mandate the use of consultants to gain compliance. And that's, that's what somewhat separates our ordinance from other ordinances. There's certain ordinances that mandate the use of specific Green Point systems or LEED systems. One interesting product, or tidbit of information, so to speak, with my conversation with the Energy Commission was, he said, "My God, this is, this thing has some teeth to it." For one thing, I was surprised to hear that. And he said, "Interestingly enough, there may be some LEED projects that don't meet or are not, don't meet Title 24, 15% above energy." I found that somewhat surprising. He was referring specifically to LEED 3.0. Our ordinance also allows stat, well, staff and applicants, specifically applicants, to adjust to the learning curve of CalGreen, the ordinance itself, the newest changes in the 2010 California Building Codes, as well as the new California Residential Code. There's going to be an enormous learning curve in the next year for everybody. And the ordinance is written, it's simplified, but it has teeth, and it's written to address those concerns. There's a certain amount of redundancy in all of Tier 1 versus what we already do, and this is another fairly important slide. With regard to erosion control grading, drainage, and so forth, much of that we already addressed through our NPDES permit. With regard to landscaping, we're currently in the mix of rewriting our zoning ordinance and dovetailing that with the water efficiency standards bestowed by us upon the state. There are transit priority proficiencies in the, all of Tier 1. We're addressing that through our general plan priority development areas, 1, 2, and 3, as well as our new zoning code update. There's little redundancy with regard to solid waste and air quality. We already have a CND ordinance. It is pegged at 60%. Tier 1 is at 65. If council shows to increase the, that percentage, we could do that solely through our CND ordinance, I believe. Bay Area Air Quality Emission Standards is now officially codified in the ordinance, I'm sorry, in CalGreen as well, stuff that we've actually already been doing. With regard to some of the input from the California Energy Commission, again, I had this ordinance pre-reviewed. Took a lot of time to read through it. There is some language, though, I need to make you aware of. Under facts and findings, under the social element, it was requested that we add the paragraph, "The city of San Carlos intends by this ordinance to ensure that all buildings subject to this ordinance will consume no more energy than what is permitted by the 2008 California Building Energy Efficiency Standards, Title 24, Part 6 of the California Building Code." Just a couple more of these. Under Sections 15.04, .125, E, F, and G, there's added language, "Projects are required to show verification of the required energy savings of 15% by comparison of the proposed building to the Title 24 standard building by calculation of TDV energy." The next question will be, what is TDV? It's time-dependent valuation. It basically is, measures electricity use dependent upon time of use, hourly, daily, seasonal, and the value of natural gas differs depending upon season. TDV is based on the cost of utilities to provide the energy at different times, so it reflects when energy is being used within the household and so forth.
Through the chair.
Under Section 15.04, 12...
Just a moment. Could you back up one slide? It's worded a little strangely, because one way that I read that is, if you have X that you were supposed to reduce in Title 24, one way I could read that is that I only need to reduce it by 15% of X.
I'm going to say that's not the intent of that sentence.
Clearly, it isn't, but...
Okay.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's written clearly.
Okay.
I'm looking at that, and it, yeah, so...
That actually was a cut and paste from a comment from the CEC. I'll have them clarify it.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Under Section, the undue hardship section, they requested in addition to the final sentence, "And to show continued compliance with the 2008 California Building Energy Efficiency Standards, Title 24, Part 6 of the California Energy Code." And last but not least, and this is a long one, I apologize for this. Under final approval, there's last two, the last two sentences need to be revised. I have to read this to you. Evidence of green building compliance shall include but not limited to certification by Build-It-Green Green Point Raider or LEED specialist, or in-progress site inspections, and final sign-off by a City of San Carlos building inspector. Compliance with Build-It-Green Green Points or LEED shall not be deemed complete until formal certification has been granted and submitted to the building official. Compliance of this ordinance alone does not equal compliance with Green Points or LEED. That was one, said his primary change that he wanted in there. And then the building official shall make the final determination whether a project meets green building requirements of this ordinance. So with that, staff would like to recommend adoption of the San Carlos Green Building Ordinance. It's an ordinance we can build upon for future needs. It's, there's going to be a lot of changes in this industry and green building as well. I'm sure there's a lot of public comment on this topic, so I would like, I assume you want to go through, hear that first, and then I can come back and answer any questions you have.
Let's see if there's any questions, dire questions of council first before you get off the podium, and then we'll get the public...
They're not, they're not dire questions, but the...
Whatever, any questions at all.
Couple of questions. The local ordinances would supersede the state, then? In other words, if we're, whatever ordinance is, it's tougher than CalGreen, local ordinance is trumpet?
You're talking about our CND ordinance, for example?
Any of the, I mean, CalGreen's going to come out, you said, in 2011, 2000, January 1, 2011? You say dovetail, and I'm trying to understand whether, who trumps? In other words, if ours is different a little bit?
If our ordinance is more restrictive, it trumps.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
In, in layman's terms, yes.
Okay, thank you. And the second question is, you aware of a ballot measure on the November ballot?
I had heard about the repeal of AB 32. I have heard of it, but...
Well, so, I guess maybe you might know the answer to this one. If that passes, how's this going to affect all these ordinances, CalGreen and ours?
I'll refer that.
This would still be the law in San Carlos.
Fine, that's fine. I just want to understand it. If it, if it trumps, may trump CalGreen, but it isn't going to trump the local ordinance?
No, it would not trump it, and, I mean, delaying action on it could affect it because...
Understand.
Yeah. The law, if the law was deferred...
But we can have our local ordinances still around.
But we could still, you could still adopt this ordinance, and I wanted to mention before, failed to mention it, you're actually tonight introducing the ordinance, and it would only be adoption later.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Anything else?
No, that's all I had. Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm going to wait till after public comment.
After?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I have about, I think, about nine speakers, and there could be more. I haven't submitted cards yet, so, so if everybody could kind of try to limit theirselves to about two minutes, let people go over a little bit, but with nine speakers, we've got Dave Crabbe, all his three names here, Lisand Drouin, Ed Bradley, those three. So Dave, David, come up first.
Lizanne left.
Lizanne left.
Lizanne left.
All hangup speakers. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Pass that one. Issue, all right.
Hi, David Crabbe, again, from 289 Crestview in San Carlos. And what I'm distributing is the letter that I sent to council about a week ago on Monday. I hope you had a chance to review it, but I thought it would be good to have it in hand to kind of remind you of where we're coming from. Tonight, I'm speaking as a member of the Cool Cities Group, which you know is a subset of Sierra Club. And what we, our concern about the whole situation here is that we've been following the Green Building Code sort of from, well, at least the last three or four months, as it's been kind of coalescing. And at the beginning of the whole thing, it, we felt we were, we had some compatibility with where it was going. It was talking about LEED and Green Point, and we, and talking about compatible with the other cities, and we said, "Well, okay, you know, we're not quite in agreement, but we can, you know, we're close." Then the second iteration came out, and suddenly, you know, Green Point and LEED disappeared, and we're talking mandatory Tier 1. Not just 15%, but mandatory entirely Tier 1. And we said, "Well, that's not good. We want to keep the other, but Tier 1's better than nothing." And now, then the next iteration comes out, and suddenly, it's, we're going to take the basic building code, CalGreen, which is a minimum basic building code, absolute minimum of what you have to do for green, and then we're going to tack on top of that 15% energy. That's less than Tier 1, and it's a minimum code plus 15% on top. And this has way, come way down from where we started from, and it's way down from what all the other cities in the peninsula have done that have got green building ordinances now. Every city that has a green building ordinance on the peninsula, and I think the staff gave you a matrix of what those cities are, eight or nine of them, every one of them is using LEED or Green Point, and every one of those, either LEED or Green Point, is more robust than what this ordinance is. So we are really disappointed that the city of San Carlos, we feel, is lagging behind in terms of leading this instead of leading the charge as the green city. And so the concerns that we have is that... And so, the concerns that we have is that, well, number one, this 15 percent energy situation, you should be aware that, I've got a lot to say. I wonder if I could, you know, maybe take the time from one of the other people, because there's a lot here.
Why don't you take about 30 seconds and wrap up your key points, please?
Okay, well, we're not in agreements with, okay, let me go to the ordinance real quick.
Because we do have a memo that you wrote here.
Yeah. Where is it? Ordinance here. They're talking about the findings, and it says on page four, on a geologic, says, "The use of green building practices encourages development away from these areas in the fault zone and encourages local development near existing public transportation services found along El Camino Real and downtown cities, areas of the city." There's nothing in Cal Green or the proposal before you tonight that addresses that question, but it's in his proposal here. It's in the ordinance. On next page, page five, "It shall encourage reduced grading, use of green building practices, reduce natural flora and fauna, encourages street placement of trees." There is nothing in Cal Green that requires that. There's nothing in this code that requires what's said in this document.
And one last one day, please?
Okay, same thing. On page five, on the purpose, A, to encourage conservation of natural resources, not required by Cal Green, to promote use of recycled material, not required by Cal Green. So the bottom line, this is a pretty wimpy ordinance in comparison to what it could be and what the other cities on this peninsula have done, and I'm sure are going to continue to do. So I really, my recommendation is, send this back to staff, have them rework it in something that's a little bit more to it.
Thank you very much. Ed Bradley, please, still here? And then Bonnie McClure after that? Is Bonnie still here? Yeah, Bonnie's there. Welcome, Ed.
Your honor, the mayor and council members. My name's Ed Brady, and I'm a San Carlos resident for 25 years and conducted my business as a consulting engineer in San Carlos since 1988. As a resident, I'm proud of the fact that San Carlos is trying to get on the cutting edge of energy conservation and application of the green building ordinances. As an engineer, I feel that every, any ordinance that involves this should have a cost-benefit analysis that goes along with it. I think what the ordinance attempts to do, well, let me digress and say, any good governance involves both process and the product. And I really would commend Chris Valli and Carol Woods in the Building Department for involving stakeholders in the process, and for trying to put together a rational way of, and a consensus of bringing together the different elements of the community who have a passion for energy conservation. I think the ordinance does attempt to take the quantifiable part of energy conservation. It's much more difficult to quantify things like grading and paving, stormwater. Some of these things are outside the purview of local codes. So I would commend that doing something is better than doing nothing at all. San Rafael, San Francisco, San Mateo, Hillsborough, Palo Alto, San Jose, all have implemented green building codes, and as Chris pointed out, I think he made an effort to try and to meld the requirements of San Carlos with those of the other municipalities that have attempted to put together a standard. Nothing is perfect, and I think the basic goal of attempting to exceed basic energy compliance under Title 24, Part 6, by 15 percent is a good first start. I think since 1978, I tried to add up the number of Title 24 compliance documents that I've done, somewhere around 2,000. I very, haven't had the opportunity to verify those things quantifiably, but I think this is a very good start, and I would encourage the refinement of the ordinance and its ultimate approval.
Great. Thank you, Ed. Bonnie? And then after Bonnie, Kathleen Gallagher and Julie Willard. Hi, Bonnie.
Hi, Bonnie McClure, San Carlos. I'm speaking for Sierra Club's subcommittees of the Sustainable Land Use Committee and also San Carlos Belmont Group. We have sent you letters. I won't repeat what's in the letter, except to say that we support the ordinance as suggested, written by San Carlos Green and the Cool Cities. Much stronger than the one that Chris has done. I especially would point out that the city of San Mateo's ordinance is much stronger, and the one that was given to you as an example for San Carlos, from San Carlos Green and Cool Cities, differs from it very slightly. Chris's is way below. I know it's a good, it's a good effort, but I know he's trying to make it easier financially for builders and contractors. And having worked in the construction industry for 40 years, I appreciate that. That's my other hat. But I must say that my environmentalist hat is stronger than my construction hat. And I feel, coming from that industry, I feel very strongly that the final approval of a project should be overseen by either a LEED-certified inspector or a Greenpoint, and not just left up to the city's building inspection department. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Julie? Julie Willard?
Kathleen Gallagher.
And then, oh, where'd Kathleen? Oh, Kathleen Gallagher, I'm sorry. You were right in front of me. I was skipping here the next one.
Yes, over.
Sorry.
Thank you. Kathleen Gallagher, 1167 Walnut and member of San Carlos Green. I have two main concerns about this draft ordinance and offer a recommendation for council's consideration tonight. The first concern is that the recommendation does not follow the city council's direction that was given to staff regarding two main actions. One stated that Title 24 plus 15 percent was the direction staff did that. I appreciate what Chris and Al and staff have done, but it doesn't meet the other direction that staff gave, which was a more robust green building ordinance, similar to what was been quoted tonight, city of San Mateo, city of Palo Alto, numerous other jurisdictions. You have the matrix in front of you. Excuse me. It is my belief, I'm a sustainable programs manager, I have attended other stakeholder meetings of what city of Palo Alto is doing. They are adopting Cal Green, but keeping their green building ordinance with Greenpoint rated, with LEED, because they are the standard. They are the standard that I believe San Carlos, city of good living, should adopt. It involves water conservation, indoor air quality. These are the things that I think we all envisioned when this body approved a green building ordinance in the Climate Action Plan, 3.1B in the Climate Action Plan. Very quickly, my suggestion, I attended the first stakeholders' meeting, my concern was that, there was concern by construction folks. Definitely, I see that. I see that in many other cities. But I think for city of San Carlos to step back and say, "We're only going to do energy efficiency." Title 24 plus 15 percent does not get us to where we need to be. Excuse me. I think this has been road-tested. Greenpoint rated, LEED has been road-tested by other jurisdictions. This is the standard that I think city of San Carlos should approve by. Chris had talked about reeling in other projects. I really don't think this is a green building ordinance. I think this is an energy efficiency ordinance. This is not a comprehensive ordinance, and I think we envision that in the Climate Action Plan. So I appreciate your time, and I hope that this can go back to staff for a more comprehensive green building ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, Julie? Hi. You have time to think about it now, one more time? Good.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Julie Willard, and I'm a resident of San Carlos and a member of San Carlos Green, and I'm here to encourage you to send the draft green building ordinance back to the drawing board and adopt the original recommendations made by San Carlos Green and the city council. The ordinance as it stands, as Kathleen was talking about and some other people have been talking about, it does not comply with either the Climate Action Plan adopted by the city council or with the Cal Green Tier One requirements adopted by the state. Instead, it only adopts one portion of the energy efficiency requirements, and that's the 15 percent that Mr. Valli was alluding to, and it ignores all the other standards, such as water conservation, air quality, and other forms of energy efficiency. The staff proposal has been so narrowed down that it doesn't even conform to its own definition of green building ordinance. It is also substantially narrower in scope than all the other local municipalities that have green building ordinances, such as San Mateo. So I'd like to strongly encourage the city council to send this ordinance back to staff with directions to conform it more closely to the green building ordinances of other nearby jurisdictions. These entities have adopted ordinances that utilize the well-established Greenpoint and/or LEED checklist. Council should adopt the proposal put forth at the original stakeholders' meeting and the requirements in its own Climate Action Plan, which state, and I quote directly from the Climate Action Plan, "Develop a green building ordinance that is consistent with that of neighboring jurisdictions or that is custom to the city of San Carlos that requires," and I want to emphasize the word "requires," the word that Mr. Valli used, was recognizes, "requires a Greenpoint, LEED, or equivalent green building certification per development category." So thank you for listening, and I just urge you to send this proposal back to city staff. Thanks.
Julie, thank you. Okay, a few more here. We have David Skupas and Sarah Rosenthal and Robert Stafford. Hi, David. Welcome.
My name is David Skupas, San Carlos resident. I am also now the leader of the Cool Cities team for San Carlos, and we're Sierra Club members that are also residents of San Carlos, and we work with on environmental issues. We took, I was able to take part in the stakeholder meetings that Chris Valli held. I do want to compliment the city on taking real quick action and creating and addressing this and for Chris to get members of the community together. We, you know, one of the goals that, he mentioned several goals at the beginning of that meeting. One was to act on the general plan and conform to the requirements of the city council, but also to be consistent with what the neighboring communities have done in terms of green building ordinances. We really, we really supported that quite a lot. In preparation for this, Cool Cities worked with San Carlos Greens in coming up with a kind of a position on what we think the green building ordinance should include. It included such specifics as LEED Silver for commercial buildings, Greenpoint 75 for residential construction. There were a number of other things that we recommended. When we went to the first stakeholder meeting, we found that the initial proposals from the city were very close to that, and we were thinking that we're on the right track here, right down to the Greenpoint 75 and LEED Silver for those various types of construction. So when we got back for the second meeting, and this has been said already, but it was very different in terms of getting, talking again about the state code, my feeling at the time, and having been involved in the debates last year, is that we were reopening the debate, because I think that the proposal at the time was, you know, go with the state code or do a green building ordinance for San Carlos. And I think in a way, this just opens up that whole question, because now, again, we're talking about the state code versus things like LEED and Greenpoint. At the second meeting, one of the things we asked was, "How does Tier One and what you're proposing compare with the earlier proposal? Is it more or less stringent than LEED Silver and Greenpoint 75?" And at that time, the staff did not have, had not completed their analysis, and they were not able to tell us. We spent little time working with people in San Mateo that are familiar with the analysis that's going on there, and their assessment was that the Tier One is not as strict and as strong a standard as Greenpoint 75 and LEED Silver. So that's really the basic question from our perspective. I think from what we're finding out, that what's being proposed is not as strong, we don't think it's consistent with what the city council wanted, and so we'd like to ask for the city council to, ask the staff to look this over again and come up with a stronger standard. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Sarah? Hi, welcome, Sarah.
Hi, Sarah Rosenthal. I'm a San Carlos resident, and I've worked in real estate development and construction with a focus in green building for the last eight years. So while I'm not quite the veteran that some of the people up here are, this has been an area of professional and personal interest for me. And I'm here tonight to reiterate much of what many of the people up here have said, to state that Cal Green will be the state green building standard, the state building code, which is the minimum standard by which all buildings must be built, starting in January 2010. Another way to think about that is if you build your building according to Cal Green, you get a passing grade. You are meeting the minimum standard. It is a grade, in some ways to think about it, a grade of D. The proposed San Carlos Green building code proposes 15 percent improvement over that minimum of standard, only in the area of energy efficiency. So to put that in perspective, as we've discussed tonight, some of the issues that would be overlooked include water conservation via gray water reuse, for example, indoor air quality via different material uses and construction practices, the use of recycled, rapidly renewable, or regionally sourced materials, light pollution, the heat island effect, I could go on, but to name a few. So in short, San Carlos would be adopting a standard that could perhaps be given a grade of C relative to Cal Green. We are better than that. As proposed by San Carlos Green, I suggest that we look to the example set by the 30-plus municipalities in California that have adopted green building ordinances to date. That number is growing, too, with the city of San Mateo as a model. These certification systems have been tried and tested, they're third-party verified, they're comprehensive, they're flexible in that they allow the developer and the owner to pick and choose among various categories in order to achieve a certification level. And these systems also provide extensive education and training programs that have been, again, tried and tested over several years. Additionally, they are becoming mainstream in both practice and cost, such that some of the major concerns around the premiums incurred by green building are becoming, are going away, and the long-term savings are proving hugely beneficial. In the end, I think we can all agree that a grade of C is not good enough for the city of San Carlos. Let's agree on an ordinance that allows us to strive for true sustainability and impact in this community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Robert Stafford? And if anybody else would like to speak after Robert, you'd be welcome to. Just fill out a card there, before or after. Robert, welcome.
Good evening, mayor. You know, I think most of us in this room can recall driving in cars with no seat belts, large cars, V8s, big bumpers, babies meandering about throughout the car. Time passes, values change, regulations go into place. We have seat belts, energy efficiency, the baby's in a car seat. By analogy, you can ask yourself, "What's the baby in the car seat today?" It's really the future of San Carlos. I think this ordinance puts us in the right position in a middle ground. The agreed ordinance is now before the council is consistent with the Climate Action Plan. It straddles a middle ground, an aspirational one towards what the folks would like to see, which it's going to be at some point. Think of where the cars have evolved. As a marketplace application, we are starting to marry our values with our economic practices. It's only a question of time before what folks want will become the standard. The issue is going to be, is it going to be at the heels of somewhat of a police state? I think staff did a great job with Carol Woods and Chris Valli of creating a collaborative process. It's a simple, prescriptive approach that we can do with planning and building. More importantly, it keeps San Carlos the theme simple of a village. Four ways to maintain verification: qualifying green raters, LEED specialists, city of San Carlos building officials, approve third parties. This is a gateway for community collaboration, not a gateway for restrictive, sort of a police state. An open question for some folks would be, "How did they get here this evening? Did they walk? Did they drive their car? What are we doing individually as people to lower our carbon footprint? Is it only through a building ordinance?" I think the answer is a wider, more nuanced view of energy conservation. The parking lot is filled tonight. It's filled with people both for this and against this, and I think that is something that resonates in our minds as to our personal practices, rather than imposing a very restrictive police state. police state. We're not Palo Alto, we're not San Mateo, we're San Carlos, and I think the future, it looks great with this ordinance, and I encourage your adoption this evening.
Thank you. Michael Yatos, Yato? Slipped that card in at the end there. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Mike Yatos. I am a local architect. I started my firm here in 1982, and I was a resident in '76, I think. I just recently moved to Menlo Park. And by the way, I don't know what Menlo Park's tagline is. I do know San Carlos' tagline. I actually have a special interest item that I'd just like to bring to you on this, on this particular thing. I'm very much in favor of it, you know, to do good things is a, is a good thing, no matter if it's a whole lot of good or just a little bit of good. But I do have a concern professionally. One of the things that we had talked about was flexibility, and Chris made that presentation, Chris Valley made that presentation a little bit about flexibility. One of the flexibilities is to have a way of doing this good work in more than one way. And the second part of that, and my concern is, we have licensed professionals who are licensed in the state of California to design buildings, architects, engineers, contractors who have state licenses. Now, each of those people have some limitations. Contractors and engineers have to come to an architect and under some, some cases, but in all cases, they have the ability to do the basic things. When you introduce Lead and Build It Green as something other than a guideline and insist that it become a third-party verification by their certification, you've now introduced a third-party certification into the ordinance that's not state-approved licensing, probably well-accepted and probably well-intended, but it's, it adds a different dimension to it than a licensed person in the state of California. It also introduced something where you have third-party qualified only under that certification, which takes away all the generalist aspects of all the work that needs to be done. And I think some of those who spoke to you today mentioned things from, everything from grading to sanitary sewer, to drainage, to reuse and, and recycling of demolition material and construction materials. These are not single-issue ideas. This is wide-range, generalist kinds of stuff. And I'm not so sure that an individual specified certification of a Green Point raider or our lead raider is going to do that for you. And I think it's very important not to narrow ourselves with that certification issue. Use it as a guideline, because it's, as it was mentioned by several, or at least two people, this is a great, tested, and, and experienced program, both Lead and Build It Green, but they should be guidelines, not mandatory certification.
Great, thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Okay, well, let me just first say, I've never said this, I've been very impressed with how prepared and professional and articulate all the speakers were. I mean, that's incredible. This is, this is a bright group of people speaking here tonight, and I thank you for your efforts in, in, in coming this evening and expressing yourself. So, thank, thank you all very, very much. So, with that, Chris Daly, Mr. Daly, there's, there's quite a bit of consistency or some major issues there. Maybe, before we turn it back over to council and so forth, would you like to maybe spend a little time, and maybe, you don't need to hit all of them, and maybe the major themes on some of the discussion points or some of the points that were made?
I'd address all of them, actually.
Please, because I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear your, your side of it now that we've kind of gone from your presentation to public comment. What are your thoughts?
Okay, thank you. First of all, I appreciate all the comments that were shared with everybody tonight. I think they're of value, let's just put it that way, and I respect what I'm hearing. However, I am hearing a common theme with a lot of these comments, and I, and I, and I think it's important to address that this evening. This ordinance is not written to mandate the employment of consultants to meet the requirements of this ordinance. And I, there is a, there is an emphasis on consistency with other agencies, and I will admit right here and now, that is, that is not where we are consistent with other green building ordinances. We do not, the ordinance proposed does not mandate the use of consultants. I'll speak philosophically here for a moment. I feel an applicant's money is better spent on the building components that make a structure sustainable. I'm not using the word green anymore. I'm talking about sustainability. I would rather see an applicant spend $2,500 to $3,000 on building products that make their home greener, but I'm using the word sustainable now. So, again, I'm going to repeat, we're not, we're not, this ordinance is not intended to employ consultants. And I, that was a common theme that I heard amongst some of the speakers. The ordinance, it does allow flexibility with the application process. That is a common theme by many of the stakeholders, not just big developers or contractors out to make a buck. It's a common thing amongst everybody. There's another topic about inspectors inability to enforce a green building code or ordinance. I couldn't disagree more. Staff actually is going to go to Build It Green training just to see what it's all about more than anything. Carol Woods and I have gone to Build It Green training to become Green Point professional, professionals of some sort. We do intend to go to more Build It Green training. It's part of the package of implementing this ordinance, in addition to the training available for CalGreen as well as all the other code changes that we're, will be enduring January 1st, 2011. There's a few other items that were mentioned here. Compatibility with other communities. I think that, like I stated, the, there's an emphasis on the facts and findings not relating to the code. That's, that's language from Climate Action Plan and General Plan. It's, it is related to the code. It's also related to the components of CalGreen. It's, it's a big picture, more than anything like that. I agree, doing something is better than nothing. I keep hearing Lead and Build It Green Point Raiders. That's, that's commendable, but again, philosophically, the issue that I have with emphasis on, on these Green Point systems is they're not necessarily code-based. And from a, from a code official, I have to stay, make a stand there with respect to, well, let's just, I'll just share a couple items with regard to a Green Point Rated Checklist. Protect topsoil and minimize disruption of existing plants and trees. That's not in the code. Install a foundation drainage system. That's in the code. You'll see that in plan review more than likely. Design and build structural pest controls. Well, guess what? Builders tend to do that due to liability and so forth. Incorporate two inches of compost in the top six to 12 inches of soil. That's not in the code. Construction material efficiencies, wall and floor assemblies are delivered panelized from a supplier. Well, that's somewhat mandating how one builds, I think, and that's not what I'm looking for in an ordinance. I'm sorry, that's what, that's not what is included in the ordinance. Reduce light pollution by shielding fixtures and directing light downward. That's not a code-related item. I think it's an ideal that we're, we're shooting for here with the Green Point system. There's a few other, other items I'd like to address. No fireplace or, no fireplace or install sealed gas fireplaces with efficiency rating greater than 60% using CSA standards. That's, that is in the code. It's in CalGreen, actually. Install wiring conduit for future photovoltaic installation and provide 200 square feet of south-facing roof. You can get one point for that. That mandates somewhat how things are built. Photovoltaic is a low-hanging fruit. There's so many other things that you can do to a residence to make it more energy-efficient, which is what our ordinance is based upon. Windows, insulation, reflective roof material, higher, better efficiency HVAC systems. There's so many things that an existing residence alone can do as well as a newly-built residence. I can't tell you how many homes in San Carlos have photovoltaic systems on, an uninsulated house, or a house that has a 30-year-old furnace. You get one point for a kickoff meeting with raiders and subs. So, that, what I'm trying to get at here is these rating systems are, I think they have value in a certain market, but they're not code-based. And what I'm, from a building official, I try to push more toward a code-based system that has teeth and is measurable. And trying to think of what else I can comment on here. I think that the overall theme I was hearing was, like I said, Lead and Build It Green Point Raiders. The ordinance is not intended to employ consultants. It's to give people the, the option of doing that if they, if they so choose.
Okay. I think there may be some questions.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Again, that's a good summary and so forth, but I think you'll have a chance to talk more here, as are questions or comments here by council. Okay? Excuse me, you're out of order, sir. Sir, you're out of order, please. You're out of order. Excuse me, you're out of order. Okay. So, so with that, can we get council's comments here? Who would like to talk first?
I have a couple of questions. Are we doing comments or question? I'm going to ask questions.
Comments or questions, sure, please.
Mr. Valley, there's a slide, one of your earlier slides, slides said, I'm just going to paraphrase, "Adopt a green building standard that requires Build It Green, Lead, blah, 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 or equivalent." Is that what this ordinance does?
Yes.
Okay. The second thing I saw on one of your slides, it was about solid waste and air quality, where ours is 60% and Tier 1 was 65%.
Yes, Tier 1 was 65.
You mentioned how, and that had to do with like demolition and construction, and you mentioned how we could easily change it to go up to 65%?
My understanding is that we have the ability to change our ordinance to reflect 65% versus 60.
Yes, that's a local C and D ordinance.
Okay, so that's something we could do tonight without?
I would.
That'd be a separate, a separate C and D ordinance.
Okay. And then, I'm going to talk to you, but I have a couple of questions about staffing levels. People brought up San Mateo and Palo Alto and these other cities, and what I would give to have their staffing size. We don't have a large building department. We've cut it almost every year now for a couple of years. So, you're talking about right now with CalGreen, we're going to pull in about 10% of the permits. With the San Carlos ordinance that is being proposed to be introduced tonight, you put a number of 70 to 80, 80% of permits will be pulled in.
Yeah, and I, that percentage may be high, is a ballpark figure that we're shooting for. I may come back to you in a year, and that number may be 40 or 50%, but what I'm trying to get at is, we're reeling in a huge number of additions, the smaller projects that typically would not be included with just a regular or the untouched CalGreen, if you would.
Okay. And with that being said, we haven't given you any more people. So, how are you going to be able to accomplish this many more permits coming in and still have a prompt turnaround time so you're not holding up development?
We have in-house expertise that already deals with this through the plan review process. And when I say that, I'm, I'm referring primarily to energy, Title 24, Title 24 Energy 15 and above. If an applicant chooses to use a consultant, Lead or Build It Green or whatever, that may speed up plan review. We'll, we'll find out. I, it's, I would, it's an added cost, but it may equate to a slightly sped-up plan review. I don't know yet. That's, that, I honestly can't say whether hiring a consultant to implement the, a Green Point rating will be quicker than just regular, the other option, the or equivalent.
Okay, well, because I'm, what I'm trying to get at, and not to steal our city manager's term that he took from a very dry, long book called The Tipping Point, when are we going to hit the tipping point in our, in our building department where, I mean, we, you don't have a large building department, so how much more can we put on to the single department without requiring more staffing? I mean, I'm just worried that.
I can answer that. I can answer that. We've, we've addressed the, the layoff of our last building inspector, June, as of June 30th. What we've done is we've adjusted our counter-hours from pretty much all day to just nine to three in the morning. What that does is allows me to shift people to go out in the field when needed or stay in-house and do plan review. The emphasis is still plan review. That's, that's our number-one priority, is, is, is taking in applications, processing plans, and then the other component of that is doing the inspections for that. And I've made adjustments to allow for that. And it has really helped to have our revised counter-hours. That was, made the difference between things working and things not working, and also has reduced staff stress level considerably, given the recent cuts and so forth.
Okay, and I know Councilman Grokaw would, would bring this up if he was here. What happens if, if there is an uptick in the, in the building permits being pulled? What happens if suddenly you get, you, you receive more traffic? Are you going to be able to withstand those by doing this, and doing this at the same time?
It depends what the, the new regular, what the new normal is with an uptick. I, currently, we, I would say we'd be able to, let's put it this way, anything that we, we cannot, any time we cannot maintain our plan review turnaround time goals, we would send out. And what that would probably result in is larger projects being farmed out to one of three plan review consultants that we have. Right now, we're, we're doing everything in-house, but if I start feeling or seeing a leg in plan review time, we'll start sending things out.
Okay. And then my last question, Mr. Ross, because I can see you moving over there, and I know other people need to ask questions. On the offshoot of, of, there's not an uptick, but we maintain at the same level we as, we're at now, what if, what if we have to go through layoffs again?
It's a great question, and I'm glad, I'm glad you asked that, because I wasn't expecting to be able to address that tonight. If we have, if we, if we are going down the road of another layoff of an inspector, I'm not saying it's the, the death of building division, but I am going to say it will result in our borderline inability to provide minimum plan review inspection, the, all the items that were mandated to do. I think we're going to be drastically impacted by, by that. I think we will be, it'll be nothing but issuing permits and doing inspections, and that's it, if we're lucky. And plan review turnaround will suffer drastically. Inspection turnaround time will suffer drastically. Morale will suffer drastically. There's a lot of, tack on another couple of weeks to everything we do right now.
Okay.
At least.
That's all the questions I have.
Mr. Mayor. So, so let's keep going with council here on questions that you would have of Mr. Valley. Mr. Mudd?
Mr. Valley, one of the questions that came up was the San Mateo ordinance. Can you just compare and contrast what have we got here versus what San Mateo is supposed to be doing?
Okay.
Short version.
Yeah. Not exhaustive, I mean, just.
Highlights.
San Mateo residential news, 75, Build It Green Points, remodels and additions, Green Point Rated whole house, or 25, commercial Lead Silver. With regard to, I'm talking about San Mateo right now, in case you didn't know that.
Right.
San Mateo requires third-party verification. All new residential construction projects, 100,000 or greater valuation for additions and remodels, commercial 10,000 square feet or greater. I don't believe that they include tenant improvements in their ordinance similar to ours. Again, San Mateo is, my understanding of San Mateo is they're fairly heavy on the third-party verification, which is actually true with a few other of the ordinances. County, Daly City, although Daly City has had their ordinance shot back to them by the California Energy Commission for touch up to some language. Hillsborough owner has two options, third-party or city staff review. Burlingame, plan review, site inspection, staff review.
I think just to the one city, I think he was asking.
I think just the one city I think he was asking about.
Although, let me just hit one point you made. You mentioned San Mateo County. So if I'm building in the unincorporated part of the county, it's going to mandate that I have an outside consultant?
They're not only going to mandate that you have an outside consultant, but they're going to require a $5,000 bond at the end of your project if for some reason your project doesn't meet green building requirements. And if after a year your building does not still meet green building requirements, they'll keep that bond.
And that's in the unincorporated county?
Correct, sir.
Wow.
Okay. Now, I will state also that they, that their ordinance, they, they were the first out of the chute, so to speak. And they are in the process, I'm in constant contact with their building official, and they are re-reviewing what they're doing. And they are looking at our ordinance as, as, as language in our ordinance as a model, as well as other cities as well.
So I'm curious about that statement. You've said it twice now tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm looking that there's a number of cities in San Mateo County who have passed an ordinance that requires this. Why are people looking at us?
Why are what? I'm sorry.
Why are, why are cities looking at us?
Well, ours is more, a little more based upon code versus a Green Point system. Ours also allows flexibility and choice. Ours does not mandate a consultant. Ours is enforceable, more enforceable by staff or staffing. And it's based upon CalGreen. It's something that we have to enforce anyway. So let's build upon that and go from there.
One of the things that you've brought up, I was kind of curious about this, there's, we've got the CalGreen, there's been a number of referrals to the Build It Green and Green Points. It appears to me that Green Points and Build It Green is pretty much a Bay Area phenomenon. I'm not seeing that it's being used outside of the state of California. Is it being used outside of the state? Is it just a California product?
I believe it was invented in California, and whether or not it's used outside of the state, I, I don't know.
Okay, I just had to look it up, because it looks like it came from the city of San Francisco proper and then.
I think in 2005 it was invented. Anyway.
Let me just follow up with this last part. The outside consultants that people use, how are they licensed? Are they insured? Are they bonded? Are they regulated by the state? Can anybody throw up a shingle?
They are not regulated by the state. They are, excuse my words carefully here, Build It Green regulates their raters. Whereas Mr. Yantos and other licensed officials are pretty much under the purview of the state. That somewhat worries me as a building official, when we have the certification entity also regulating the entity.
Understood, so let me just understand this, because I'm not in the, in the trade. So a, a building inspector is somebody who has been certified by the state, has passed an examination, is usually a PE, I assume, professional engineer?
Not, not a building official.
No, not necessarily, no. Are they insured? Are they bonded?
A building inspector?
Yes.
Will they work for the city?
We're employees of the city. So we're, yeah, we're, we are, we've gone through training, we are, we are qualified to enforce the building code, codes. Staff is going through extra training though to better learn the intricacies of Green Point rating.
That, I'll yield at that point, those are my questions.
Mr. Griselli?
I note that in our handout here, that as of December 31st, there were six entities in the county, five cities and the county. There's 21 entities in the county, there's 20 cities, and there's a county, okay? So I'm curious, are the other 14 working on this? Is Menlo Park working on this?
Well.
Or are you aware, I should say, are you aware of, of everybody lining up to do this? Or is it just, it's a couple and then a couple more and a couple more?
A, in every city that either does or does not have a green building ordinance right now, must somehow dovetail what they're doing with CalGreen. I've stated that numerous times.
Right.
There are numerous cities, I want to say Atherton, Menlo Park, Foster City, I'm just kind of going up and down the peninsula, that don't currently have an ordinance but are working on it and again are eyeing ours.
Do they have to have an ordinance? Do they have to have an ordinance? Or won't CalGreen be their ordinance?
Let's put it this way, if they don't have an ordinance, they are mandated to enforce CalGreen as a baseline minimum.
Yeah.
But we are enhancing that.
Right, I understand. I'm just, I'm just trying to get to the basics of, on January 1st, everybody, every city in this, in this county is going to be covered by the state ordinance.
They're going to be, yes, yes, they will be required to enforce CalGreen.
CalGreen?
Yes.
So if they have their own, they can dovetail, as you say, if they don't have their own, they just look to?
They're not only going to need to dovetail their existing ordinances with CalGreen, but they're going to have to resubmit their facts and findings to both the California Building Standards.
Whatever building ordinances they have, they're going to have to make sure they all comply.
Correct.
Okay.
As ours.
Okay.
As is ours.
And that could be considered as a green building ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, it seems to me that this comes down to a couple of items here. It comes down to some, as you mentioned, the staff considerations that we have, situations that you believe are code-based relative to others. I'm not criticizing, I'm just speaking of the fact that you mentioned. Economic considerations relative to people coming in for permits and things like that. I mean, it's, it's, it's a start, as someone mentioned, it's a start, it's not a finish. Some of the ones that have come up have obviously done certain things. I would, personally, I think, I mean, again, this is, and I'm jumping ahead, because the mayor hasn't even spoken yet, I would be supportive of this ordinance, to introduce this ordinance, not adopt it tonight, we're introducing it. But yet I would like to have, like, almost like a, in a year, because 2000, January 1st, 2011, we're going to have the state thing, to come back in early 2012, after it's been involved for a whole year, and see where we are and make sure, you know, that we're up to speed on this, or we're not up to speed on this.
Exactly.
Relative to the other cities, and again, I see six here, but I don't see the other 15, at least in our county, to see what we could, we could come up with.
Yeah.
That's just my thought process later. And I yield the time to the mayor now.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, the advantage being the mayor is, two of my questions just got asked, including that last one from Mr. Griselli, but I do have one, one more. So this whole California agreed code requirements effective January 1, 2011, so this is something that they've been working on, they say, okay, boom, January 1. So is this something that's going to last for five years and then they'll update it and we're going to want to get better and better and do more? And, or is it something that, you know, you used a couple of words, the learning curve and, and what was the other word? You know, this moving target, of course, with what we're trying to do for climate action here. Will it move faster than that? And then, but the other part of that is, if, if they move slow, you know, can we phase ours in? Or do you expect us to be changing this every year? Because they're changing every year. I mean, you have any idea?
I, I don't much.
Because I'm just worried with, with.
Yeah.
We're basically talking about a starting point.
Right.
To me, versus, you know, this is it.
We're starting about.
So what happens? Where are we at a starting point? Where's California? And how do we manage through this?
Okay.
We all have a common goals.
Yeah.
But how do we manage through the process?
Well, first of all, I'm going to address one of the few questions I think you asked there.
It was one question.
CalGreen, a lot of the voluntary measures of CalGreen will become mandatory over time. How long that timeline is, I don't know. Within the next code cycle, I think we're going to be seeing a lot of voluntary measures be mandatory. If I'm wrong, I'll be, you're telling you I'm wrong, but.
The typical would be, what, two years?
Typical code cycles, three years, actually, but, but, two years technically, you know, if one input and so forth goes through it. But, so we're going to be seeing a lot of the voluntary measures become mandatory. Then, and another thing I wanted to mention was, we're basing the 15% above California Energy. California Energy is one of the most restrictive codes in the nation, and it continues to become more restrictive. They're continually amending this code. So one of the things I wanted to mention earlier was, what is 15% above Title 24 Energy now, in a year, could be 20% above Title 24 Energy. In two years, could be 25% above Title 24 Energy, comparatively speaking.
When California decides. Or what the state decides.
Correct.
Yeah.
It is very rare that a state building code becomes less restrictive.
Right.
And we're allowing for that. We're renowned for our restrictive code series here, due to seismic and topographic and so forth, climatic and everything else.
So, but, so I guess, I'm thinking of a similar question then. For you to best manage for quality of service and efficiency in your own organization, you know, how does your plan fit with what you expect California to do?
Well.
Does that make sense?
Our ordinance mirrors the, I'll say, philosophy of the, of the, of the Building Standards Commission, where not one, not one Green Point rating system is recognized. They leave that up to us to recognize rating systems. They're, they write code so that your building division can enforce it. They don't write code so that we employ third parties all the time to help enforce it.
I understand that.
And there are so many other areas where people are required to get third-party consultants for pole tests, welding, special inspection welding, and so forth. I actually have a slide that lists all the other things that we have people do. See it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Griselli, sure. I'd like to call the question here.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion, but I want, make sure the city attorney gets me on this. To introduce the 2010 Green Building Standards Code, Part 11, with mandatory Tier One Energy Efficiency Standard provisions and modifications and amendments, and add section 15.04.125 to Chapter 15 as San Carlos Building Ordinance. But I'd like to add on that we, we come back, we revisit this, this doesn't go away, and or in, let's say, the first quarter of 2012, to see and have Mr. Valley come back and tell us what happened, because we're all going to guess on what's going to happen and how it's going to go in 2012. All, having that being said, I would, I would encourage Mr. Valley, you to come back if, in the middle of next year, things change around, I don't want to just have to wait till 2012. If we, if you think we should be doing some other things.
Sure.
That we need to be doing, that we should do it.
I think so.
So I don't want to just necessarily make this ordinance permanent for, for a period of time. But anyway, that would be my, my motion. Mr. Rubens?
Well, the only point I want to make is that that'd be part of your motion, but it's not part, it's, you're not intending that to be part of an amendment to the ordinance.
No, no. But I, but as, as a, as a, how can I put this? As part of the motion, to come back in early 2012, first quarter for sure, and let us know how it went in 2011. And as an aside, not to just, to come back sooner if it's necessary.
Okay. Do I hear a second on that motion?
Well, second for discussion.
Okay. First and second, let's talk about it.
Okay, I'll start. Spent some time with staff and I've read a lot of letters and emails that have been sent to me. This is a tough one, because I know everyone wants to lead and everyone wants a strong or stronger green building ordinance, but we have to look at the realities of some of these situations. And I sat on the G-PAC, which the Climate Action Plan came out of, and one of the things Mr. Survey told us when we were on the G-PAC is, don't worry about budget. Just make a general plan, and if the money's there, we can do things, and if the money's not there, we can't do things. But, you know, we can't plan the budget, so let's, let's make a general plan. And now that I'm sitting up here, all I get to do is worry about budget, and it's unfortunate. A lot of these things that we want to do, that we think are vital or that are vital, we can't afford all the time. And, and I think it was said tonight, and I think it was, it was very poignant when it was said, this is the middle ground. We're not going to be the worst, and we're not going to be the best. I'm not going to run around and say we have the best green building ordinance in the, in the county, in the state. We're, we have, this is a middle-of-the-road one, this is something we can build on. I think all of the points that were brought up are valid. I just think right now, since this is our first go-around, we need to do something in the middle. We need to see how it works, and then we can build on that. And I completely agree with Mr. Griselli. I'd like to see this back in a year. We can talk to our staff, see what's working. If things are working very well, let's keep adding to it and let's keep, let's keep going, let's, let's make progress. But we, we can't shoot the moon on the first time. And as much as I would love to run around and say, you know, we're the leaders in this, this, we are in the middle ground, but we're, once we get this adopted, we're way better than the 10 to 15 other cities in the county who haven't done anything. So I'm going to be pushing for us to go with this ordinance, but I want to see it back in a year. I want our staff to really take note of how this works, what works well, what doesn't. I would like to see these same arguments from the other groups come forward again, and then we can build on it. But let's see how we do in this first year, and let's see if this works, and let's see if we have the staffing levels to maintain this. So I'll be, I'll be voting for this motion.
Mr. Mudd?
I, I too have some challenges with this. I'm not satisfied with presentations actually from anybody. Here's a couple of points that I didn't hear. Our neighbor to the north, this might sound oblique, but it'll come back to a point. Our neighbor to the north has a challenge with massage parlors. And one of the challenges is that if you can hang up a sign, you can be a massage therapist. The state of California has finally put in some laws that say, if you're going to say massage, you better have gone to school, and here's the certifications, and you have to take an exam and do something else like this. In the case that we are putting together an ordinance that says we are going to mandate something and put it into the hands of consultants that are not vetted by the state, are not necessarily insured and not necessarily bonded, strikes me as an odd place to put both builders and the city, and I'm curious about where the liability is. So in one sense, there is a point for the state to play, to say, if you want outside consultants to come in here and start to do these check-offs, what is the process? How are these people vetted? And how are you supposed to let them into your home? We are dealing with people's homes, places of work. These things need to be constructed appropriately and properly. And I'd want to make certain that whoever is doing the inspection is not just properly trained in a specific vertical, but these are people who can actually hopefully add value to a structure. There were some points that were brought up, one word struck me, which was light pollution, and the immediate thought that came to head to my mind was, what's going to happen on Eucalyptus Avenue for Christmas? It's, it was, oh my gosh, what are we going to do there? To the point of, of the letters coming, who are stating that this ordinance doesn't go far enough, I tend to agree. I mean, to some extent, saying 15% plus Tier One is a bit of a punt, and we're only going to be looking at, at cars. You do a quick calculation, the CO2 reduction would mean you would take roughly 160 cars off the road for a year. It's not bad. We could do better, but it's not bad. Something that Mr. Valley said during his comments were, was sort of the difference between a code-based solution and some of the LEED and Green Point solutions. One of the things I did like about Mr. Valley's approach was that if it is in the, in the ordinance and it is a code-based thing, then we've got some real teeth to be able to enforce it. If it's LEED, I don't know what our ability is to enforce a LEED spec versus something else. And I'm stating that as a point of ignorance, I don't know what that is. To that extent, I'm, this feels like a punt, and I'm not going to vote for it. What I would prefer is that we defer this. I would like some time to be able to say, well, here's what LEED is, here's where our ordinance is. Where there are minimums, where there is this 15%, where can we start to increase some of these numbers in the ordinance as it exists in CalGreen? Because we can make our own adjustments. I mean, that strikes me as a better way to dovetail. I feel like I am splitting the baby in this one, but I'm not satisfied with the ordinance as it is tonight, and I would want to push for more work on it.
Mr. Griselli, anything else you'd like to?
No.
Comment on? Okay. So with that, I'd like to call a vote.
Councilmember Mudd?
No.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
Moving on now to our last agenda, item 9E. It's that the mayor appoint two council members to attend joint meeting with representatives from.
from Mid Peninsula Open Space District. Board of Directors consider creating a trail access point at Los Vientos Way.
Honorable Chair, members of council, Guy Wallace, Park Superintendent, City of San Carlos, standing in for Director Long. The connection from Crestview Drive to Pulgas Ridge Open Space Preserve ranks highest and the first priority trails list referred to in the general plan. Additionally, the San Carlos Trails Committee has recommended creating an access point at the end of Los Vientos Way. Representatives from the Mid Peninsula Open Space District have indicated a desire to provide access to the Pulgas Ridge Open Space Preserve trails from Los Vientos Way. In an effort to gauge public support for creating access at Los Vientos Way, Mid Pen Open Space District has requested that representatives from the city and Mid Peninsula Open Space Preserve conduct an onsite public meeting. This meeting is part of Mid Peninsula Open Space District's policy to conduct outreach meetings to ensure public support for proposed projects. Therefore, the city and Mid Pen Open Space District strongly encourage public attendance at this meeting. The meeting is tentatively scheduled at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, September 28, 2010, at the proposed trail connection site located at the foot of Los Vientos Way. With that, I will do my best to ask, answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions, staff?
I just have a question of the city attorney. Because I live on Crestview, could I serve in this subcommittee?
Depends on how close you are.
Well, I'm not that close.
If you're more than 500 feet...
I'm more than 500 feet, but I just had to ask the question.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I do have three speakers here, and I really appreciate your patience staying here till the end of the evening. In order, we have Oksana Sireno, Boris Erlestrong, and Judith Selvage? Selvage? Great, I'm sorry. So in that order, please come on up and welcome to speak. I'd like to hear what you have to say about this. Great, thank you.
Hello, I'm Oksana Sireno, so I live on Best Court, so it's probably less than 100 feet from the proposed opening of the gate. So I guess, so it was several meetings already with neighbors who live very close to that proposed opening of the gate, and I believe we kind of about eight or 10 people kind of had opportunity present here some issues we raised. It was like probably half a year ago, and also we wrote, I believe, two letters where we restated our points. So today, it's kind of myself and another neighbor were asked by other neighbors to come here again and kind of restate those issues we had, just in case to kind of to the members of the city councils realize the impact it may have for the close neighborhood. So I will be very brief, since we already kind of discussed those issues, but I will kind of list just those eight points we had in our mind. So first of all, this opening of the gate will increase the dynamics of the neighborhood and quality of life of those people who live in close proximity of that place. So first of all, it will increase the traffic of people in the neighborhood who are not necessarily, could be the hikers. So it will be more teenagers, or maybe bikniks, and some smokers or drunks may come to that area, which right now it's not attractive to those kind of gatherings. So kind of the biggest problem is that it will increase the car traffic in the neighborhood, and this is a T-street and cul-de-sac, which is not kind of very prepared to serve the high traffic. And the street's pretty narrow and has no turnaround, so we have quite cul-de-sac which will have to serve as a turnaround. And right now, even neighboring cars have some time trouble to kind of to pass each other, and obviously it will be kind of much more problem when it, this gate will be open.
So if you could start wrapping up, please, or summarizing?
Yes. So the parking problem, so this is in the residential area and no parking place right now exist for the access, like for the trail coming. So I am mother of three children, and right now my children play in a cul-de-sac. Of course, the children's safety will be compromised. So it will increase the fire hazard in our area, especially in our kind of backyards, where it's kind of not much protection of the open area. So also, it will increase vulnerability to possibly burglars, vandalism, and raise other safety issues if increase of the people, presence of different kind of peoples in the area.
So in summary, what would your last statement be?
Yes, it will reduce the privacy issues, and as a result, it will affect, actually, it will have negative impact to the home prices in the neighborhood. And as example, this is Henry's House, who is next to the gate.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to start.
Yes. So it's 270 days on the market, that's it, yeah.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, Boris, please?
Yes, my name is Boris Aranstadt. I am a resident of San Carlos for the last 14 years. In addition, I am avid hiker, and hike on average two, three times a week in local and remote areas, so I think I know a lot about hiking. What I was surprised with the proposal that is high on agenda to open trail on Los Vientos, and there was nothing said just to open the trail, there is better opportunities to open the trail. I completely agree with what Oksana Sireno said, and in addition, I will kind of would like to show my angle on this. So I strongly oppose the point of council to discuss opening of the gate at the end of Los Vientos. I believe this is a bad option, and there are better options to provide the access from the top of Crestview. Opening the gate at the Los Vientos is an unacceptable option for multiple reasons. It will disturb the dynamics of the existing quiet neighborhood. Los Vientos Way does not have adequate parking. Los Vientos Way is a narrow street. I don't see how cars can make a legal U-turn without getting into neighbors' driveways. This is why all the Los Vientos neighbors and Best Court neighbors oppose this development. Okay, now, there is a significantly better option to provide desired access from the top of Crestview. The option that better suits San Carlos residents, does not disturb the neighborhood, and does not antagonize Los Vientos and Best Court residents. This is the opening of the existing gate at the corner of Crestview Road and Los Vientos Way. There is existing gate, just open it, please. The Los Vientos and Best Court neighborhood are not disturbed. It adds value to the homes on the Crestview if you open that particular gate. Crestview has ample of parking, no issues with U-turns. As far as a trail access is concerned, accessing from Crestview has multiple advantages. There is an existing trail just next to it, 200 yards of it from the gate. Thus, if you open the gate, it will naturally, and I repeat, naturally, connect Pulgas Ridge Park with Hallmark Park and Water Dog Park, creating a chain of trails spanning tens of miles, something that City of San Carlos can be proud of. It makes the entrance more visible to the public, and the new trail also could be accessible for people with disabilities, something that City of San Carlos can be proud of. I don't...
Okay. So again, if you could kind of give us your last thoughts here in summary?
Last thought here, okay. I understand there were some issues to agree with City of San Francisco, but I believe those beautiful cities can agree on that. So I basically encourage appointment of the council to discuss opening the gate, but not of Los Vientos, but on Crestview, and to solicit public support in opening that gate, which will serve better, to San Carlos neighbors, residents of San Carlos.
Great. Thank you very, very much. And Judith, welcome. Thanks again for your patience of listening, a bunch of other things this evening.
Thank you. I'm Judith Selvage, and I live in the vicinity of Los Santos Way. And I was asked by my neighbors, as well as the concern that I had, to verify where this gate location was, and I heard that it was, I gather, the foot, that is, the west end of the street. And we heard the homeowners' objections to that. My neighbors and I are concerned that it might have met the gate that this gentleman's just referred to, opening up the San Francisco Water Shed, Water Department District's closed area there, which is surrounded by a chain-link fence. It provides a lot of protection to the wildlife there that the neighbors enjoy seeing, and also the, what he referred to, I believe what he's referring to, when he talks about existing trails, is a fire break that has been plowed by the San Francisco Water District, which protects houses that are directly adjacent to that. And so the kinds of disruption that might occur down on Los Vientos Way, being moved up to the corner of San Carlos, of Crestview and Los Vientos, will actually cause disruption to all the neighbors along that fire break. And there are currently occasionally some trespassers there who ignore the fact that it's a closed area. So the, by moving this from one place to another, you'd be creating a new trail, you wouldn't be simply accessing an existing trail, and I think there's a lot of neighborhood objection to that, which I'd like you to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak on 9E? Okay. Okay, with that, council, what would you like to do here? Again, we are just appointing representatives to attend this meeting. I myself, I'm available on that date, but I'd be welcome for any of the two of you, or I'd be welcome to join.
Mr. Mayor, I'm more than willing to serve on the subcommittee, depending on your pleasure.
That'd be great. Mr. Griselli? I'd be fine? Okay. So it's the two older guys here. Experienced people we will put on this committee to work with you. Great, okay.
Do we need to make a motion, or just the mayor just appoints us?
Appoints.
The mayor just appoints.
Point Bob Griselli and myself. Great, thank you. And with that, I adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.